Well, not quite.
That looks like the train.
Yeah.
Only when she's looking at us. We bow every time you look at us. Honest to God, we bow. It may be just subtle that it's a bow. Yeah. What is she doing?
They wouldn't shut up. All right. It's six. All the clocks are different. There's six in the house. I'll go for that one.
Okay. Russ and I will. Quiet over there.
Good evening. I'd like to call the 15th, 2010. West Sacramento Planning Commission to order. We typically start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I ask you to rise and I'd like to ask our city planner, Steve Ricola, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ricola. We'll start with presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. We do not have any requests to speak on this item, but I do, I would like to let folks in the audience know, if you'd like to speak on an item, I'd like you to fill out one of these slips. It's, they're located by the door, and please leave it for the clerk. We ask that you fill those out before the end of the staff presentation on the particular item. We also ask for comments to be three minutes or less. We have a timer to help you with that. And also, obviously respectful discourse, no applause, and so forth during those presentations. So we'll move on to item number B, which is correspondence and staff communications from the city planner. Mr. Ricola, if you could just share with us some of the changes we're seeing in our --
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. You'll notice that the agenda's a little bit different than it was in June, and it's because of the fact that the agenda has been tailored now to be nearly identical to the agenda of the City Council. Now, the two primary changes are that the consideration of minutes will be approved by the commission as part of consent agenda, and then the second change is that there no longer is identified on the commission's agenda the notice of being able to move items back and forth or to make changes of the agenda order. However, if there is feeling among the commissioners that there is a strong need to make a change, any of the commissioners can approach the chair prior, under the general administration function, and request that such a change be made. So those are the two primary changes. Do the commissioners have any questions regarding that? Okay. If not, the last meeting of the City Council was on July 7, and at that meeting, the City Council conducted a public hearing and first reading of the ordinance that did a couple things to the zoning ordinance. It made changes on off-site property signs, there were changes made to mobile home park improvements, and there were also changes made to massage therapy. On the 21st of July, next Wednesday, the council will consider amendments to the general plan contract with interior harness, as well as conduct a workshop on the changes of the function to the zoning administrator, which is item number eight on your agenda tonight. In addition, you have three pieces of correspondence before you. The first one is on agenda item number three, the proposed OPDE, conditional use permit, from David Tilly. You also have a memo before you from Sandra White on the California College Career Technical Education Center, conditional use permit, and finally, memo from David Tilly on agenda item number six, a letter, a public comment regarding the proposed liquor bar and conditional use permits. And those were all the items that were public correspondence prior to the beginning of the meeting. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll return to you.
Do commissioners have all those pieces of correspondence?
Should be three.
I only have one, which is the memo from David Tilly.
Oh, really?
That's what I had as well.
That's all I have, too.
Okay. We'll make sure you have those prior to the start of those items. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Ricola. We'll move on now to disclosure, ex parte communications. This is when planning commissioners disclose that communications they've had on any agenda items outside of this public meeting. Mr. Liebig.
Madam Chair, thank you. I need to disclose that I've had phone calls with the applicant's realtor broker for item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Liebig. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, Madam Chairman. I have talked to the applicant in item number four and item number six.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. I had a discussion with a property owner near the subject property on item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Ledesma. Mr. Morzini?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I did have a, actually had a meeting in the applicant for item number three, Greg Bream's office, last week.
Thank you, Mr. Morzini. I had a discussion with a consultant, I believe, on item number four, just some general background. It's Blackburn. All right. That leads us into our consent agenda. We have two items, the minutes and wireless permit. Any questions or a motion?
I make a motion on the recommended actions and approval of the minutes.
For both, we're taking the consent items together, so it's both items? Okay.
Yes.
By Mr. Ledesma, seconded by Mr. Moore. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. That takes us to our regular agenda, and we'll be on item number three, which is a public hearing on proposed OPDE U.S. Corp. conditional use permit, number 10-3. I would like to, because it's a public hearing, I'd like to, and we have a number tonight on our agenda, I'd like to just review the hearing process with folks. Some of you may not have been to a planning commission meetings, and I think it's helpful to kind of understand what's ahead. We typically start public hearings by hearing from the staff and hearing a presentation from them. They typically provide us with a recommendation on actions. Then we allow the applicant to speak. Then we'll actually open the public hearing, and I have a pile of speaking slips in front of me. I'll go through those in the order in which they were received. You have, as I mentioned, three minutes, maximum three minutes to speak. We won't end up going back and forth in dialogue, so that sometimes is uncomfortable if you're presenting and then you're giving us information. At that point, we're not, we're not in dialogue, but we're hearing and listening to you. Then after those presentations by members of the public, we'll come back and the commission may have some clarifying questions or ask staff to respond or the applicant to respond. Then we'll close the public hearing, and then it's brought back to us to deliberate. So just so you know what's ahead of you with the hearings. I hope that's helpful. Now, with no further ado, I'll turn to Mr. Tilly for the staff presentation.
Yes, good evening, Ms. Sandina, members of the Planning Commission. I have a brief PowerPoint for you on this project, so we'll call that up and get started. Yes, as you mentioned, we are here at the public hearing stage for the OPDE U.S. Corp. solar power project. This one was done in workshop format before the commission last month, and we are back tonight in public hearing, seeking action on the project tonight. Just to review for the commission and any members of the audience who were not here previously, this project consists of a 24-megawatt solar power project. Over 1,900 solar trackers will be placed over four sites on port property on the west side of the Deepwater Ship Channel. They would not be on the actual levee themselves, but they would be on areas on the, although on the water side of the levee, these would be placed in areas that historically and even recently have been used for dredge spoils. And when they dredge the channel, these are places where those dredge spoils have been placed as a dredge channel. The project actually overlaps the city limits, so a portion of the project, Sites 1 and 2, were actually within the city limits, and then Sites 3 actually overlaps the city limit, and Site 4 is solely in the county's jurisdiction. However, in this project, the county has allowed the city to be the lead agency for entitlements and building permits. The solar trackers would be, each of the four sites would be connected with overhead power lines, these where they are not adjacent. So for example, Sites 1 and 2 are not immediately adjacent, although Sites 3 and 4 are, and then power lines would also extend north of Site 1, past Bridgeway Island, and to connect where their existing overhead connection is that crosses the channel near the Carlin Water Tank and Southport Business Park. This is a map that I tried to highlight with the two yellow kind of blobs in the, towards the top middle of the, where the four trackers would be located, just so it makes it more clear for the audience. The most northerly tracker, Site 1, would begin just south of, if you were to extend Marshall Road across the channel, the first tracker site would be located just south of Marshall Road. That site would extend southward down the channel, almost to where if Bevan were to all, to cross the channel over to the other side. And then Sites 2, 3, and 4 would be further south, including Sites 3 and 4, which extend over the city limits and into the unincorporated area. This is port-owned property on the west side of the Deepwater Ship Channel, but adjacent to the levee, but not actually on the levee structure itself. This is a detail of one of the four sites. They're all very similar. It shows how it's rectangular in nature, and the trackers themselves have a north-south orientation for solar ray. They're arranged in this pattern, and each of the four sites are very similar. The trackers are about 20 feet apart approximately and arranged in these rows. Each of the four sites is very similar to this. This is a view of the site looking from the east levee. So we're looking from the south port side back toward where the project would be located. So this is actually on top of the levee. That would be west of the Bridgeway Lakes neighborhood. You can see the channel, and then the levee benches starting to go up on the, on the west side of the channel. This here is the same view, but the trackers themselves have been overlaying onto the site. Again, this is still looking from on top of the levee in the, from the south port side across the channel looking west. Trackers are visible from this angle as you're on top of the levee. And then this here is, following on that theme, is also a line of sight from the Bridgeway Lakes neighborhood. The road on the, toward the right is actually Bridgeway Lakes Drive, towards kind of the southwestern portion of Bridgeway Lakes. This also tries to show the relative grades of the properties and the levee structure itself, and also then the horizontal distance across the channel to where the trackers would be located. The finished floor elevation for many of the homes on the western portion of Bridgeway Lakes is around 10 to 10 and a half feet. And in looking at some of the plans we have for some of the houses out there, those rear windows are about 17 feet or so off the ground, and then the levee structure itself, the east levee, the peak of it is approximately 30 feet. And then those homes are separated by a 100-foot parcel, plus the drainage canal. The horizontal distance is approximately a quarter mile across the, across the channel to the tracker site on the west side of the Deepwater Ship Channel. We had prepared and circulated a mitigated negative declaration on this project. Comment period ran through early June through just recently, last week. We had not received any comments from any state agencies. We did receive one comment, however, this morning, and I'll address that. That's part of the memo. There are some potentially significant impacts that we have identified from construction noise, as what I expected. This is an area where there are many sensitive status species, given its adjacency to the bypass and some existing bird requeries in that area, and so we have mitigation measures to address those. And of course, given its proximity to the water, we need to make sure that we don't have erosion during, when the sites are graded to place the trackers. And as mentioned, we do have mitigation measures for all impacts. I did provide a memo to the commission tonight regarding this particular project. Just this morning, we received a comments from the director of the Mule Habitat organization regarding, specifically regarding Swainson Hawk Habitat. The memo suggests that mitigation should be required, which is contrary to the findings of the environmental document. Staff does not concur with the opinions offered by the habitat organization, because this is a site where these are located, which are used for dredge spoils. This is a very low-value habitat, given their level of disturbance that's on an ongoing basis in this location, and so we are recommending that the commission adopt the environmental document, you know, as presented. So with, to conclude, we'd be happy to take any comments and questions from the commission and the public, and then after the public hearing's over, we do recommend adoption of the environmental document and approval of the use permit and the mitigation monitoring plan. So with that, I'll close my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Is the applicant, will the applicant be making a presentation at all?
We do expect him to provide his, provide his summary remarks. That's correct.
Thank you. All right, well, open the public hearing.
I'm Greg Brem with OPD Group, U.S. I had a presentation, but most of the slides were the same, so I'll just get to the basic meat of what we had to say. There were some comments received from the public regarding the transmission and visibility of the site from their homes. The transmission lines themselves, in between each physical ray where the rays are present, the power lines will be all underground. So the only time we've used overhead power lines is when we had the very narrow corridor in which to transfer the power, to try to avoid the levee prism itself, and then the conservation easement that's in the middle between Sites 2 and 3, and also, there's a very narrow spot on the Deepwater Channel, makes the curve towards the harbor, towards the port itself. The development site here, just shown from the air, looking towards the neighborhoods, and then again, the project site. The existing power lines will go north to an existing crossing that comes across the Deepwater Channel into the existing commercial area. You very, very faintly see the tower up there that would be using the existing tower to come across for at least one crossing. Additional power lines will go north through the existing transmission that goes through West Sacramento itself. Still waiting for the final plans or proposals from PG&E. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, we have a number of folks who have asked to speak tonight. I'll be calling you up one by one, but I'll give you a heads up that you're, you're in the waiting, waiting room, so to speak, coming up after the speaker. If you could, when you come up, even though I've called your name, if you could, just for our records, state your name when you arrive to the podium, that would be really helpful. First up is Matt Rose, followed by Rachel Adelman.
Madam Commissioner and commissioners, I'm actually, just have one request before I begin speaking. You should have received a petition from homeowners along Bridgeway Lakes and then up, I think it's Oakland Drive community. I do have some information here, it's important, and in light of so many people being represented by this information, I was hoping that we might be able to get an extension on the time just by two minutes additional.
I think if you can, if you can stick to the three minutes, that would be helpful. Thank you. We have a number of speakers, so thank you.
Okay. We've already gone 30 seconds.
And this will be, this will be put into the record.
Okay.
Thanks.
I mean, first and foremost, I believe that, you know, I can speak not only for myself, but most of the people in the community, we're for solar power. But upon examination of the proposed conditional use permit, the initial study mitigated negative declaration prepared by the city are missing critical information, and it's necessary to evaluate the project and determine the potential environmental effects upon the project. These documents also make several assumptions in the body of the text that are contradicted by OPDE's own graphical representations of line of sight, for example. For example, the power lines. On page one, the description of the project includes a brief description of overhead power lines that will need a tie into an existing PG&E substation, but from the information presented, it appears it would require at least a couple of miles of line. And after that page one, the power lines are never, ever again mentioned. The reader's left to wonder the size and voltage of these power lines, the effects of the installation of these power lines, and how these power lines will be maintained. Miles of new power lines will unequivocally have an effect on migratory birds and potentially species of special concern. However, there's no discussion of this and the effects of this section or the mitigation measures. The fact that a standard bird deterrents on power lines and power poles are not included as mitigation measures leads me to believe that the impact of the power lines and the environment was not considered, and reinforces this fact. These should be described and included before the project approvals or permits are issued. In regard to the aesthetic impact that the power lines will have upon the residential areas directly east of the project, the initial study and mitigated negative declaration lack the appropriate information necessary to determine what mitigation measures must be taken to protect West Sacramento's residents. Line of sight diagrams indicate that residents will be able to clearly view the solar panels, and it must be assumed that the power lines and poles will be just as clearly visible. Although the environmental checklist indicates that, quote, "It is unlikely that the trackers and overhead power lines will be visible other than from the top of the east levee," and that, quote, "impacts of visual character would be less than significant." The homeowners along the east levee respectfully disagree, and the line of sight diagrams provided by OPD confirm our concerns. Given the potential significant impact power lines and poles have upon the actual or potential value of real estate, which currently has no overhead lines of any kind, we would ask the Planning Commission to require such study before project approvals or permits are issued. I only have 10 seconds. One of the other concerns that we've got is there's no information about what kind of liquid is in the solar panels. Most of them are made with heavy metals. There's no indication as to the safety or the security of these panels, or maintenance or upkeep. It's just very incomplete. Without that information, I urge the commission not to approve this and table it so that the city can continue to work on these issues. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Rachel Adelman, followed by, it's either Terrell or Terrell Lee. Right. You can lower and raise the podium that way. Perfect.
Ah, thank you.
And if you could state your name again.
I'm Rachel Adelman. I live on Hume Street, which is on the east side of the levee. I don't have as much information as my neighbor, as I just received information, but when I called the city number, they, I had asked, are there going to be overhead power lines? They said, absolutely not, none visible. I asked if we would be able to see the solar panels. They said, absolutely not, they will not be visible. I, too, have a two-story home, and I can see over the levee, and it looks like from the drawings that the solar panels will be higher. I'm concerned of the resale value of my home and the values of the homes in my entire area dropping. You have built a very nice community there, and the values of the homes, as they've been dropping in recent years, are going to go up again, but I'm not sure I can resell my home with huge, high-voltage power lines near it. I don't care how near it is, visible, families will not want to come there. People aren't going to want that. I'm concerned of the community, that there were no comments in the comment period. I never heard of this. It's not on your website. It's not on the city website at all. There are other things planned for the city that are on the website and say, you can come view these things. This was not on there. And I've lived in my home for a year and a half, and it's still, this notification last Thursday was the only notification I have received about this project at all. And so I'm just hoping that you guys will look further into this and not approve the permits this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Terrell or Terrell, Terrell Lee, followed by Denise Seals. Thank you, Terrell.
Commissioners, thank you. Terrell Lee. And I approve this, these projects at the city ports, all of, all projects, providing that they're PLA agreements, project labor agreements. As city, county, state employees, employees enjoy organized labor, which gives collective bargaining, representation, retirement, health and welfare. I, too, enjoy these things as a union carpenter. As a parent, a child in junior high school. As a husband, I used to come home with work boots, dirty work pants, empty lunch bucket, and a paycheck on Fridays, which does not happen anymore. Matter of fact, 28 days would be a year that I have not worked. California and other states have experienced a glob of cheap labor, and I urge you, because the middle class has been so devastated, real estate devaluation, and job losses, cheap labor could be considered one of the reasons why, in my case, it's a fact. That's why I'm not working. Low-wage workers are building our homes, developers making millions, made millions, mortgage companies made millions. What society gained, middle class gained out of that? Millions of foreclosures. So I urge you guys, I'm for this project, but do not give the port of Sacramento, our treasure, to cheap labor. Use the port to build middle class back up. We're devastated. Thank you.
Denise Seals, followed by Judith, I think it's Lamare, Lamar.
Hi, good evening. My name's Denise Seals. I'm the president and CEO of the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce, and I just want to start with, isn't it exciting to have a really full Planning Commission agenda? I mean, no matter what your position is on what's happening this night or on some of these items, yay. I did read it all. I did read it all, Commissioner Moore. So Madam Chair, Madam Chairman and Commissioners, as you know, the chamber doesn't endorse specific projects, but certainly supports the economic development opportunities created by this type of green innovative project. This is a perfect example of a project designed to utilize the port, take advantages of one of our really last business attraction opportunities through the enterprise zone, take advantage of our location for transportation and use varying modes of transportation, and meet the council's goals for the port of West Sacramento. This project establishes a U.S. headquarters in our community for an international company, and while it's not directly related to this request, it is the first step in a very innovative business plan that creates jobs, increases manufacturing here in our community in zones that were zoned for manufacturing, and brings other international vendors currently working with this company already to our city to create more jobs and work with this company here. So we hope that in the spirit of economic development and economic opportunities for all of our community, you'll consider this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Le, if you could pronounce your name, I'm sorry.
Judith Lamar, thank you.
Thank you, and then followed by, I believe it's Jim Pakel, but I apologize.
And Jim Paschal.
Paschal, thank you, okay.
Thank you. I'm Judith Lamar, I'm president of Friends of the Swainson Hawk. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. We're eager to speak to you tonight about the project. We certainly support solar energy, green energy, and infill projects. Unfortunately, we did not receive notice of the project till 5:00 p.m. tonight. We received an email from one of our supporters who was familiar with it and said, have you heard about this? She gave us the clue about where to find the information, and I also tracked down David and had a chance to talk and had a chance to talk with him about 5:30. So, we have had really no opportunity to review this environmental analysis in a, in a way that we could give you some real thought-through reaction. Our off-the-top reaction, of course, is that it does not comply with the city's agreement with the JPA to mitigate for impacts on the Swanson Hawk. And we would request a 30-day extension just so that we could review it in detail, consult with the Department of Fish and Game, and understand their reading, because they didn't submit anything in writing about their analysis of the project area. We understand the Yolo JPA believes that the project should participate in the JPA agreement. As you, I'm sure, know, our organization is a citizen group, we're a 501(c)(3), and we were formed by citizens to protect the Swanson Hawk of our region, which are a threatened species under state law and have legal protections. So, we enjoy that as our hobby, and we have many supporters and members of the West Sacramento public that also enjoy that hobby and are very aware of the many Swanson Hawks that nest in the city of West Sacramento and at the port of Sacramento. And so, it's very difficult for us to understand how habitat could be marginal that might be used by nesting Swanson Hawks, which need that habitat to do their reproductive activities. So it's not like, oh, the hawk flies over, might find a rat, find, doesn't find a rat, can fly somewhere else. It's about the location of the nesting sites, the available habitat that's within a mile, half-mile of the nesting site is critical to the sustenance of the chicks. So, we also note that there are some burrowing owl issues here that are of concern to probably the Burrowing Owl Society, which is another group in Yolo County that may not be aware of the project. So we do want to thank you for this opportunity, but we felt that the opportunity was not presented to us. We heard about recycling. I got a CD of the environmental analysis in the mail. I heard nothing about this, and, you know, the Department of Planning normally does tell us when there's something about Swanson Hawks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paschal, followed by Danielle Rose, please. Jim Pa, yeah, thank you.
I'm Jim Paschal, also from Friends of the Swanson Hawk. The, all of the Yolo County jurisdiction, including West Sacramento, are members of the Yolo County Habitat JPA, which administers a countywide program, which, among other things, to mitigate for impacts of new development on Swanson Hawks and Swanson Hawk foraging habitat. The mitigation ratio that's been adopted independently, but basically uniformly among all the jurisdictions, including West Sacramento, is one acre of mitigation land preserved, usually by conservation easement, through the Yolo Habitat JPA for every acre developed. And, you know, your JPA, in many ways, is deemed as a model by other jurisdictions. The consequently, maybe I'm mistaken, but it looks to me like, for whatever reason, the city did not even consult with the JPA on the issue of whether this does or does not have impacts on Swanson Hawk foraging habitat. If so, how much, what should, what the mitigation ratio should be? Because I know there are some open spaces in between some of the panels, but also the panels, and there's also concrete covering up a large part of it. Maria Just Wong, the executive director, got her letter in this afternoon, again, quite late. I don't know whether it was lack of notice or whatever. We found out shortly before 5:00 from a West Sacramento citizen, and I have to disagree with the assertion that the site has no habitat value. It may be less than in some other locations. Other locations have much more habitat value, maybe some less. The one-to-one mitigation ratio was, has been adopted countywide, citywide, as a sort of an average of all of this, realizing sometimes maybe it's a lot, sometimes a little. I would urge that this be put over for 30 days, that staff be directed to meet with the California Department of Fish and Game and with the director of the Yolo County Habitat JPA, and ask to sit down and, you know, specifically deal with that, with this issue and come up with the appropriate determination as to what area of Swanson Hawk foraging habitat has been mitigated and to mitigate according to the JPA guidelines, which all the jurisdictions have agreed to. I thank you very much, and I do think this, otherwise, this is a good project, and I'd like to see more solar in the Central Valley. We've got enough sun, mind you. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Rose, followed by Matt Kelly.
Hello, Danielle Rose, for the record. I'm going to continue Matthew Rose's thoughts, so I do share his concerns, along with the other 59 homeowners that signed our petition. Similar to the power lines, the complete description of the solar panels in the mitigated negative declaration is lacking. We know that there will either be 1,920, as stated on page 1 and 26, or 1,928, as stated on page 29, as far as the foundations are concerned, with 27,216 solar panels. Unlike the power lines, the size of the foundations and the solar panels is presented. However, the public is left to wonder what the solar panels are made of, what liquid is inside of them, and how they will be maintained, disposed of, what homeland security measures will be taken to protect this project during and after completion, what mitigation measures are going to be made based on the contents of the panel, whether it's water, heavy metals, silicon, lead. It's critical to identify these materials when evaluating the risk to the water quality, wildlife, and human health, and we feel that that wasn't adequately done. As a point of clarification, the environmental checklist and the materials included in last month's planning commission meeting indicate that the maximum height of the Mecca solar tracker panels at 40 degrees is 15.7 feet. According to their website, the range of rotation for a single tracker is 20 to 45 degrees. Why wasn't the height at 45 degrees given? Considering this discrepancy, what is the true maximum height? And why isn't that reflected in our line of sight diagrams when discussing the aesthetic impact on the residents to the east? In light of many discrepancies and omissions in the mitigated negative declaration, the public truly didn't have an opportunity to comment on the project, as defined by SEQA and the city, did not adequately follow the SEQA guidelines as required by law. As specified in the SEQA guidelines, two of the four purposes of SEQA Section 1,502 are to inform governmental decision-makers and the public about significant environmental effects of projects, and to identify ways that the environmental damage can be avoided or significantly reduced. In Section 1,506.3, it requires that the initial study have a description of the product, project. The project is an activity that may either cause direct physical change to environment or reasonably foreseeable indirect change, and any one of the following is identified in Section 2,106.5, an activity undertaken by a public agency, an activity undertaken by a person supported wholly or in part of a public agency, or one that requires a permit. We're asking that you take longer and reconsider this project and not approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Mr. Matt Kelly.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Matt Kelly. I represent the Sacramento Building and Construction Trades Council. We're a labor organization that represents all of the building and construction trade unions, some 25,000 construction workers in the Sacramento and the surrounding counties. We stand for you tonight to speak to the economic development opportunity that exists before you this evening. Certainly, this is going to provide badly needed construction jobs for the people that I represent. I believe that this project creates an economic development engine for West Sacramento in a port area that is designed for this type of project. I think we're very fortunate that you have the port, that you do have the ability to attract projects like this, projects that are going to provide an economic engine for the city, jobs for the people that I represent. This item has not just hit the street, as you are being told by many people. I've known about this project myself for some four and a half months.
Interesting.
Maybe five months, like, about five months, actually. But nonetheless, I ask that you approve the applicant's request. I think that it's imperative that you provide an opportunity for the guys that I represent to get back to work. We've got a good arrangement with OPDE on those jobs. My union brother stood up tonight, talked about it. We'll talk about that, yeah. My union brother stood up and talked about the need for jobs. Here is another example of a resident of your city that works in the construction industry that doesn't have the ability to have a job right now, because there's not much development going. So when somebody wants to spend the money, make the investment in West Sacramento, I think that you should embrace that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Those are our requests to speak. Before I close the public hearing, though, I'd like to ask the commission if they had any questions that fall within the realm of continuing the public hearing. Questions?
I don't have any, but I know the applicant may be able to answer some questions, so I'd like to reserve the opportunity to maybe reopen the public hearing just for the applicant. I think we've heard from all of the other folks, but the applicant's going to be able to provide us some, some answers, technical answers to the project specifics, so.
Well, actually, let's do that then before we close the public hearing. Let's, if the staff and applicant could address any concerns, then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for deliberation.
Yes, I'll respond to a couple of the issues, and I'm going to ask Mr. Brim also to respond to a couple of them. Regarding the visibility and aesthetics and the power lines, these are not high-tension tower, power lines that are proposed. These are 12 and 1/2 KV, which are standard power lines that you will see in almost any community where our power lines are still, you know, haven't been undergrounded. And also, I think it's important to note that the power lines are designed, overhead power lines, interconnect the sites rather than going through the sites. So the Site 1, which is the one that's closest to Bridgeway Lakes, is west of Bridgeway Lakes. The power lines actually extend north from that site to where they are existing overhead lines are, which goes behind the Bridgeway Island neighborhood, where there already are power lines right behind the back fence of those homes in Bridgeway Island. And secondly, regarding the Swanson Hawk matter that has been raised this evening, Project's environmental document incorporates the information from the project's consulting biologist, who is present here this evening, and could provide some additional background on that analysis for the commission, if the commission so desired to hear that. And so that when that document was circulated thus far, at least, we have not heard any, anything from Department of Fish and Game, although we do note that ultimately the mitigation burden, if any, would be adjudicated by Fish and Game. And so that, that issue is still, that issue may still be pending with, depending on what Fish and Game's input would be. Regarding some of the more specifics of the trackers themselves and how they're manufactured, I'd like to ask Mr. Brim to address those topics that were raised during the public comment period, if that would be your desire.
Thank you. Is that your desire, Mr. Morzini, to have that question?
Yeah, for Mr. Brim, if you don't mind, just want to get some clarification.
Yes.
On the negative declaration, it talked about utilities and no impacts regarding drainage and sewer and water, and are there, I was under the impression there were going to be some employees that are there onsite, maintaining the facilities on a, on a regular basis, like on a daily basis?
Because of a project this size, we'll generally have staff onsite every day, every week.
Okay. However, there are no sanitary facilities, no bathrooms, no water, and those weren't addressed, and it's just, would it seem appropriate to you to have, at the least, porta-potties and water onsite for the employees?
Absolutely. Our maintenance shop, though, is only two miles down the road from the site, but we will have.
Okay, so you would, you would agree that it'd be a reasonable expectation to have?
Absolutely.
All right, okay. And also, in your letter of justification, when we had the workshop a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago or four weeks ago, Commissioner Moore pointed out that you had indicated that the amount of power that would be generated would be about 12 times what's considered or consumed in the city of West Sacramento, and you clarified that to mean by city buildings?
By city facilities, yes. Not the homeowners.
Because, and actually, in our conversation, once this process goes to the inverters, it's not really 24 megawatts, it's 20 megawatts. So, that, and I think the consumption in West Sacramento is about 100 megawatts. So, it's considerably less, it's a substantial project, but not overwhelming as far as replacing the kinds of generation that we're going to need in, you know, in our ultimate build-out and that sort of stuff. It's not replacing anything like that. Okay. I just point that out, because in, in the staff report we have now, that hadn't been revised, and I think it, it kind of, to somebody that wasn't there and didn't understand your explanation, that it's not really 12 times what is consumed within our city limits. See, I think that pretty much covers everything that, that I have regarding questions for you specifically, so thank you very much.
If I could make one comment regarding the solar panels, the content in the solar panels. These are crystalline silicon panels. They are not thin film, which contain heavy metals that some of the citizens have concern about. The crystalline silicon is basically very refined sand. The only chemicals or the adhesives that assemble the panels, there is no special requirements for recycling or disposing of the panels in this case.
You may have some more questions.
That answered one of my questions, because I still didn't understand that. But the other part was, and I, maybe I've misunderstood what you said, is where all the panels are, is that all undergrounded then to the PG&E pole?
Through the, the sites themselves, where the trackers will be placed, all the facilities will be underground. The shading effects of the wires will actually affect the production, so all the.
Okay. I mean, that was one of the concerns I heard, that you were going to run wires, but I thought you said you were going to underground to the PG&E pole that goes across the port. Is that right? How it works?
It is an option to do. We have, we have some very constricted areas, two constricted areas that are less than 15 or 20 feet wide, so we're concerned of, you know, staying outside of the levee prism with any trenches, and staying outside of conservation areas. So that's why, that's why the overhead was proposed there. We certainly can provide an alternative to do underground in the entire way.
Isn't that what you said you were going to do, is you were going to underground everything on your site?
No, the proposal specifically lays out the overhead lines that were proposed.
Oh, I thought that's what you said in your opening comment. What were you undergrounding then?
The, the undergrounding lines are the lines that physically travel through the arrays themselves, interconnecting the arrays that aren't adjacent will have overhead lines because of constricted areas in our proposal.
But it wouldn't cost anything to underground it.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not a cost issue. It's more of an issue of dealing with a constricted area, trying, you know, dealing with not impacting the levee prism with the trenching.
Absolutely. Okay. Since you're, you're talking about that, if I may, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Morzini.
However, there, that's an obstacle that can be overcome with boring, for example. If, if you're concerned about narrow, narrow areas, you can do it without open-cut trenching. You could actually bore for those, I think, you're going to have three or maybe four circuits total.
Very likely, yes.
Okay, so, so would you agree then that it's conceivable that those facilities could be installed through a boring process rather than open-cut trenching?
It is very likely that we could do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
May I, it is a bit of a technical question. Thank you for taking them, and I'm not as versed on power as my colleague to the right, but, but I just had a simple question, because we're talking about how you're going to underground and connect to the existing PG&E lines, and we don't foresee any changes there. And I'm assuming in this that PG&E's been consulted, and they don't have to do any additional lines or any additional construction around this that we're not considering.
We have submitted an interconnection application to PG&E. They are in the process of doing what's called a system impact study right now, and they will tell us what facilities will be needed. Very likely, everything beyond our crossing, once it crosses that channel, will be undergrounded. We will very likely have to upgrade the existing undergrounds during that circuit. The, the potential going north through the existing power lines that are in the industrial area of West Sacramento, we may be able to use those lines without doing any significant changes.
That's what you anticipate, that there to be no?
That's what we've requested. They may come back with a different alternative. Until we have their alternatives, we, we can't really address what might. Until we have their alternatives, we, we can't really address what might be required.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond. Mr. Liebig?
Thank you. I just have actually one question for the applicant. One thing I didn't catch, are there any new roads, roads or road improvements proposed as part of the project?
There will not be any new permanent roads now. The, the facility is only about 500 feet wide. We, very, very little need for roads in between the tracker arrays.
Okay, so after, say, post-construction, you won't have roads going in between the sites?
No.
Down from the levee, and there won't be any paving of the levee?
No, no, no paving.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before I close the public hearing? I do, thank you very much. I do have one for Mr. Tilly. Would you please remind us, I know we asked this last time when it came before us, about notice to agencies, residents and so forth? Just review the noticing, please.
Yeah, for the, for the public hearing, we did expand the noticing range because just the standard 500 feet coming across the channel wouldn't have picked up any of the residents in Bridgeway Lakes or Bridgeway Island. So we actually based the noticing off the channel itself and picked up a thousand-foot radius, and we sent out notices to about 300 property owners along that, you know, principally in the western portions of Bridgeway Island and Bridgeway Lakes. So that, and that, then that extended, you know, at least a block or two inside into those developments, but we wanted to make sure we picked up those streets and properties that were as immediately adjacent to the, to the levees as well. So those went out before the July.
And agencies and other jurisdictions, we discussed that as well at our last meeting.
Yes, the environmental document is routed through the state clearinghouse, so that sends it to about a dozen separate agencies, and then there are others outside the clearinghouse realm that receive the documents as well. I don't have the distribution list in front of me to be able to recount each one, but it is a matter of practice, particularly a project like this that would go through the clearinghouse. And comment period did close last Friday, and somewhat surprisingly, we did not receive any comments from any state agencies or any other local agencies until, at least until this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back for us for deliberation.
I have some questions.
Mr. Marzini, all right.
I, I guess we could start with my questions regarding the, the power, and we heard from several of the neighbors about the concern with the visual impact. And, and one of the things that we didn't really talk too much about, though, is this project really extends beyond our city limits, and part of the, the project is south of our city limits. And so the, the visual impact is even going to be more acute to people that travel along Jefferson Boulevard issue as it rises. And so, Mr. Tilly, you had indicated to me earlier that we're kind of the lead jurisdiction on this, and the county's kind of expecting us to look out for their interests. Would that be a safe thing to say?
Yes, we even, we even had a lengthy discussion with the county this past Friday regarding some, some of its, its concerns, and we, we have addressed those with their, our counterparts in the county.
Yeah, because there, because there, there are many people that live in Bridgeway Lakes and Bridgeway Island that are going to be able, the horizon is, and its second-story window is going to be, their horizon will be the, the solar array and, and the, the power lines in particular. And typically, even though these are not PG&E lines that, that we're discussing right now, these are privately owned utilities that are going to tie in to PG&E. We, we have jurisdiction. In fact, normally when we have a project and there are power lines involved, one of the decisions for the planning commission is to determine whether they'd be undergrounded or not. And, and that is absent, it is absent in the negative declaration. It doesn't address power at all, yet there's been a lot of discussion in the workshop and here about, about power. So I think one of the conditions in this project should be the disposition of the, of the power lines, and I would recommend strongly that, that the, all of the distribution voltage or 12 KV, 12,000 volt lines within this project be undergrounded. And I don't see, I don't see that to be a hardship. This is, this is about a $7.4 million a megawatt project, and if this was a natural gas project, for example, it'd be about a million dollars, million and quarter a megawatt. So it's an extremely expensive project, and I think that we need to make sure if we're spending $148 million on this project, that we're not going to try to skimp as far as, as overhead versus underground lines. I think even though this is ag land, the use is not an agricultural use, the use is really an industrial use. So enough said about that. I'd like to include that as a requirement. The habitat management plan that just came up, we talked about that a little bit in the workshop also, and I don't know that, it's our place to make that determination whether or not the city needs to participate. I thought all of Southport was required to participate, all the developers pay a certain fee per acre, whether there's a particular site has an impact or garter snakes and Swanson Hawks or burrowing owls or whatever. So I would hope, maybe council would agree, that, that we pass this project, if it passes on, for council to make that determination based on the, the feedback or the, the dialogue that, that, that we would ask the staff to have with the Joint Powers Authority to make sure that if there is a disagreement, when it gets to council, if there's still disagreement, we have the official folks from the Joint Powers Agreement, Maria Wong, for example, and the folks that are here that are part of that Swanson Hawk Society to speak and let the council make that decision.
Just to clarify, this is actually an action, it's a conditional use permit before our, we have the jurisdiction on this action, just as a point of information.
But it'll.
That's correct?
Correct, unless you took action and it was appealed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I thought that they had final say on it. Okay, well, I don't think that we can make that determination unless staff has some, some other recourse. I think there's a big controversy here. I, I remember when I first got appointed on, on the commission 15 years ago, I was part of a team with a planner, it wasn't Maria, but there was another gal that, I went to several of these meetings, and it's taken 15 years to get this, this thing ironed out, and I think that there should be enough information to make a positive determination as to whether or not we have to participate. And so I, I don't, I don't think that we could make that decision based on the information that, that we've heard so far with the testimony and, and what Mr. Tilly said about the reaction to Maria Wong's letter. So I'll skip past the habitat management plan. The, I think there was a legitimate question also asked by one of the speakers regarding what the actual height of this array is going to be at that 45-degree angle. I didn't catch that part of it, but it seems to me like we need to make sure that we understand what that, that line of sight is. And I have to tell you personally, you know, I really support the project. I think, I think it's a great project. There are going to be impacts, though, and I don't know how that sighting at that location could occur without having a visual impact in, in the community. The power poles are one thing, but this is something a lot of communities are dealing with, with wind energy and other solar projects. So I don't know what to do about that, that part of it, but I think that for the power and the sanitary facilities onsite and resolving this issue with the habitat management plan are things that, that need to be worked out and included in, in whatever our decision is tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Marzini. Mr. Moore?
Sure.
And then Mr. Liebig.
You know, I, I'm going to go back just a minute for our habitat on the Swanson Hawk. And Ron brought it up last week, I know I reaffirmed, or last month when we talked about it, and I mean, I'm amazed that we didn't make a call to find out if they really thought that we were obligated. I mean, I think we're absolutely obligated to be part of that, and that we have to, they have to either pay a fee or buy land somewhere. Is that not how it works, David? Isn't there just a flat fee?
When you actually impact foraging habitat, there is either a fee program or conservation easements. I think at 40 acres, you can no longer pay the fee. You know, we, you know, we're not, we're not disagreeing with the city's participation in JPA. It's more a matter of, you know, is this Swanson Hawk hap, you know, foraging habitat or not?
Well, what, what did you do last time? After our last meeting, we brought that up, who'd you call to confirm that we weren't obligated? Or is this just your opinion?
It was not, it's not that we aren't obligated to be, you know, participate in the JPA, but it's a matter of, you know, you need to mitigate for what is.
No, I understand.
Yes, foraging habitat.
But I mean, who did we, who did you call then, after we brought this up at the last meeting, to confirm your analogy of it?
Uh, this, this was part of the environmental document that was on the street at that time, so we, we actually expected to get information back from, you know, one way or the other from Fish and Game on this, and we, we did not receive that, even though the project was, you know, circulated to them. And ultimately, it is the city's, you know, discretion as to whether or not to deem this as Swanson Hawk habitat, and then therefore the mitigation applies.
But then all we end up with is somebody suing us then, don't we? Saying that we are obligated.
The ultimate arbiter of this is Fish and Game, you know, regardless of what's in the environmental document, and so that, you know, that is still, you know, out there.
I mean, that's a big concern, and what, what really concerns me is the fact that it was brought up at the last meeting, and I really thought that we would try to resolve this issue, because it's my belief that whatever you have that's a development out in that area is supposed to pay that fee, period. And that, I didn't know that we had a right to arbitrarily come up with a different decision. So I'm very concerned about that one. But my other question, and this one's going to really throw you for a loop because you like questions from the past, so Mr. Rick will have to wake up. But you know, one of the, we had a power plant being presented to us in the past, and I forget how they were going to develop the power, but one of the things they were developing was a higher quality of power, and the higher quality of power was one of the reasons we wanted it, because that would allow us to bring in entities like Google and things of that nature. Do you recall that one?
I'm wondering if you're referring to the Prima Field project?
It could be that one that was bringing.
There's a gas fire plant, right?
I didn't know the part. I didn't know there was a higher, I just thought electricity was electricity, but apparently there was a higher quality, and are we getting a higher quality electricity out of this? I mean, it's just a question. I don't know, but I mean, one of the things the city was trying to attract was Google, I believe. Is that who? Something like that, and they were, I thought the mayor had said something about he was trying to get them to let us participate, but it takes a certain type of power, and I didn't know if this was high-quality power or just power, power that we all use. I don't know. Do we have any idea?
Well, the Google project was the Google Fiber Communities project, which was trying to, at least as I, as I understand it, you know, establish a, you know, internet backbone and connection that's available, you know, community-wide through that Google program.
But it was, some of the computer companies required a little higher level of power or more consistent power? And that's what the other power plant offered, and I didn't know if this offered the same thing or not.
Charlie, I think what you're talking about, they would generate, it would be a gas fire plant, and it would be 115,000 volt lines tied into the transmission lines at the port now, rather than 12 KV.
Well, will this give us consistent power then, that?
But it's all 60-cycle power, it's, to the end user, it's all the same.
I'm sorry. I don't know. I don't understand that part, but that's okay.
Stick your finger in the socket, and it does the same thing.
If it hurts, it's good power. Okay, that's good. I, I guess then, you know, my only other, besides the fact of the dealing with our Swanson Hawk, is just, what is the security out there that we're expecting them to have?
Yeah, the site is, is somewhat remote, and even though it accesses control, doesn't mean that it, people can't get out there at all. That was actually something specifically the city's police department raised as well, and so one of the recommended conditions we had on here actually was a security fencing plan that we would get and have reviewed by PD, because it's, it's certainly not an area that they actively patrol, and they were concerned about potential vandalism, you know, on this facility, so.
There aren't a lot of police cars on that side.
No, no.
No. But then my, my final question is, how do, they're only going to deal, they're not dealing with anything on the levee, so we're dealing below the levee itself. How are we actually getting there? Were they going to have to drive on the levee?
Yeah, at the top of the levee, there is a road out there. It's, it's in varying shapes depending on where you're at along there, but that's, that is how you access that property, and it's controlled by a gate that is at the, near the west end of, near Channel, Channel Street and that kind of portion by the FedEx facility and.
Well, I mean, with all the people using the levee road up there, what do we, what is our precaution for the levee then?
Well, in this area, this is something that's actually is access controlled on that side of the levee, on the west side.
I agree.
And it's, you know, port property, so there's, you know, it's, it's limited to who can, actually, at least who's supposed to be in there.
But I think my question is, if they're, if they're going to drive on top of the levee, is there a chance that we would be doing damage to that levee, and what are we doing to watch, make sure that we're not?
That is the, the levee access road over there, and that's, you know, that is used for the maintenance activities and others that, you know, Fish and Game is out there, you know, into the bypass, you know, and others. So certainly while there's under construction, they'll be out there, but this is, we heard is, you know, maintenance vehicles, and I think Mr. Lukin would like to also help respond to that if that's his property.
Well, it's not exactly my property. It's the property of the, the city and port. In terms of just addressing, I'm Mike Lukin, a port manager and economic development manager for the city. In terms of security precautions, the site is viewable via our security camera system. We have several systems and are actually adding to those systems right now that we'll be able to view, view those. And what we had planned to do is incorporate our security system. We use a system with the West SAC Police Department, along with Allphase Security, our current vendor, to patrol and monitor the port on a 24-hour basis. And what we've been talking to OPDE about is adding to that system, them paying the cost of security for the facility, and then tying that in, either utilizing the same security company as we do, or tying that security company directly into our system and adding cameras and other things as needed. In terms of access to that road, that road is, is only accessible by vehicles via permission of the port and, and the Reclamation District. And so if someone wants to access that road by a vehicle, I actually have to approve that access, and we require an indemnification agreement for everyone that accesses that road that is not a city employee, city or port employee. And so we're very, very cautious about that road because of its adjacency to the deep-water channel. Certainly, people get out there and walk out there, but vehicular access is, is limited to only those people that have a, a legitimate right to do business out there. And as David stated, it's mainly folks like Fish and Game and other resource agencies. We, we lease some lands to some folks doing some grazing and, and vegetation control in the area.
And I don't think I'm concerned about that, Mike. What I was thinking about, if we're going to use the levee road to have a cement truck drive down on top of the levee to pour cement for the foundations, you're going to have to do that. Who is going to monitor the levee to make sure that we're not doing any damage to the levee, since that is our levee that we need to protect the city with?
Well, one of the, one of the requirements of this project is that they obtain a consent to easement from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and which has been obtained from the applicant. And one of the conditions of approval of that consent to easement is coordination with the U.S. Army Corps on any, and not doing any degradation to the levee, and also coordinating with the Reclamation District, and we will monitor that on an ongoing basis.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Liebig.
Chair Sandin, if I may just add or respond to one of Commissioner Moore's questions about Swanson Hawk. It's my belief that an independent biologist did conduct a Swanson Hawk analysis to determine whether there would be any impacts to Swanson Hawk, and the biologist concluded after that analysis that there would be no impact, and therefore there is no mitigation measure. Now, the city has the authority to accept the conclusions and analysis of its experts, even if there are other experts that have. even if there are other experts that have opposing or contradicting conclusions. So, I just wanted to remind our commissioners of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lebig.
Thank you. I have some questions either for Mr. Tilly or Mr. Lukin, sorry about that. So, whichever would like to answer these. The project will be using property that is currently used by the port for dredge spoils. How will the project then be, or how would it affect port channel maintenance? Essentially, it will be decreasing the area that you will be using.
That's a great question, and I'll attempt to answer it. Also, Tom Schiller, the ports engineer, is also here if we have any very really technical questions. But, uh, so, my attempt at that, to answer that is that those dredge cells that are located all along the Deepwater Channel, in terms of the channel deepening project, which is lowering the channel from 30 to 35 feet, which is a project that we're gonna be embarking upon over the next three years, that project, we've already deepened the port from the turning basin south to, just south of the city limits. And so, the majority of the space in those dredge cells have already been filled up by that material. And then, so that takes care of the deepening. So, we don't need that area for the deepening project any further. That was the work that was done back in 1990 when the project was initially started and then stopped due to some conflicts with PG&E gas pipelines down in the Rio Vista area. The second concern, and probably greater concern that we had, was in terms of maintenance operations. So, maintaining, once the channel is deepened to 35 feet, which it is, maintaining it to that depth. And that was of great concern to us. And what we've done is worked with OPDE. And the way that they're, and one of the reasons, their other reason is for flood height concerns. But one of the reasons the elevations of the pads are elevated is to allow a slurry material from minor dredging spoil, dredge operations to be utilized in that area. So, once they're constructed, there is an ability, if needed, to actually put dredge spoils back in that area where the trackers and the panels are.
They'll be okay with you driving tractors in between their solar panels?
Well, no, you don't drag tractors. You just, it's a, it's a material that you allow, it's a slurry. And they pipe it into that area. And then it settles out and the water's released after the solids settle out back into the channel. That's how those function.
Okay. Thank you. Then, actually, no, stay, please stay. The next question I have is regarding the security fencing plan. This came up in our workshop as well. And it's a, it's a concern of mine, I'll bring up why in a little bit. Is there a security fencing plan available? And was it included in the analysis, the environmental checklist?
I would defer to David on that. A security fencing plan is, still needs to be developed. That's one of the recommended conditions of approval.
Okay. I foresee some potential problems with the fencing, which is why I'm bringing that up. I'll come back to that one, though. I'll get through my questions first. The inside of the levee, and it's really confusing to me how to actually describe the levee. So, the, there's a levee that separates South Port from the Deep Watership Channel. And then, there's a levee that separates the Deep Watership Channel from the bypass. So, the area inside the Deep Watership Channel, there are the terraces. Those terraces, are they really Zone X?
Tom, I'm gonna actually let Tom answer that question. Tom is actually a member of the city's flood team. And very well versed at that information. So, I think he can probably answer that better than I can.
Thank you.
David might have some comments on that.
Caught me off. We had a discussion concerning this with, especially Yellow County on Friday, as to what the zoning was. The flood surface elevation is, I believe, about 23. And the base trackers will be at, the fill area will be at 27. So, they'll be above the base flood elevation and out of the potential flood area.
Okay, so that's why the pad area is going to be considered Zone X? Because it will be at base of 27? Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, that answers that one.
Sure.
One last question, and then I have some comments. And Mr. Rickola, I'll address this one to you. This is regarding the recreation plan or the master plan. And I'm afraid I didn't track down the answer to this one. There's a recreation path that goes along the opposite levee, either off the levee or on top of the levee. Did we find an answer to whether or not it's off the levee or on top of the levee?
We looked at the plan, and from the plan, it cannot be determined. And we attempted to talk to our current parks manager, David Schbach, about it. But we could not locate him this afternoon. It looks like, from looking at the plan, however, and I know this is slightly different after we talked, but looking at the plan, that it is probably part of the corridor. So, it's probably part of the designated trail system. But we need to confirm that with Mr. Schbach.
For clarification, that means it's on top of the levee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Generally, I'm in favor of this project, and I would like to see it move forward. I think it's a really good project. I do believe there's some deficiencies with the environmental analysis and the checklist. And I also think that the members of the community have raised some very important points that I'm not sure we can answer tonight. So, I would still be seeking a continuance of this measure so we can address the mitigation. I would like to know whether or not we can underground the power lines entirely. It would be my preference to, if it can be done, or to do it wherever possible. And I think the Swanson Hawk issues need to be clarified. As far as the environmental checklist issues, there are a couple of discrepancies, I think, I would like to have clarified. In the environmental checklist, each pad will be graded to match the existing levee elevation. On that side, that is 32 feet. That doesn't match the actual elevations provided in the drawing, which is 27 feet. So, there's a five-foot difference there. I'm guessing that the drawings are correct, that the checklist is probably off on that one. But that does affect the flood control, I think, of the actual channel, along with the fence system. And this is why I was having concerns. If we put up cyclone fencing around, um, around the trackers and there's actual flow in the channel at that height, that fence will turn into a trash rack, diverting flow, stopping flow, or blowing out and then taking trackers with them. So, beyond the actual aesthetic issues that I see with having fences around those whole projects, there's flood control issues that I foresee with those fences. Under the checklist, this project, uh, I believe, could alter the course of the river in a manage, in a manner that could result in flooding. And it's for these reasons I just brought up, we're raising the elevation of the terrace. I'm not sure if that's been evaluated for flood control reasons by the Corps. I believe the Corps has jurisdiction over those levees, those particular levees. Actually, that's it on the flood control. Oh, to answer, I also did some questions. Oh, somebody in the, in the audience brought up a good point. The trackers, what I calculated, could stick up up to 14 feet above the levee. It varies in different places, but that's the calculation that I got on that one. I have large concerns with the aesthetics. Since the arrays will be 14 feet above the levees, there will be limited views from the house, from at least the two-story houses that back up to the levee. And I, if I lived there, I would have a, have a pretty big concern. If you're looking out onto what was just open space, and now there are solar trackers, I think some sort of mitigation to dampen those, the views of the trackers would be in order. The problem is, you can't plant trees around them. Yeah, maybe you can plant shrubs that don't, don't cover, cover the tracker, trackers. But I'm not sure how to address this. You can't even address it on the other side of, of the Deep Watership Channel or on the same side of the houses because you can't plant anything on the levees. And you would need it to be up higher. Maybe there's something we could, could plant along the, say, the recreation corridor, along the top of the levee that would be allowed by the Corps to soften the views of those trackers. The other angle, and why I asked the question about the recreation path, is if it's part of the city plan to have a recreation path on top of the levee, that, that impact on aesthetics needs to be evaluated as part of the environmental checklist. And it hasn't been. And then, mitigation measures to, of course, soften those. So, again, I'm in favor of the project. I think there are still some issues that need to be addressed. And otherwise, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lebig. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And at the risk of being repetitive of some of the other commissioners, I'll try to just echo a couple of things in brief. But I will start with that I am supportive of this project and would agree with Mr. Lebig, there are some issues we need to address, however. But generally speaking, this is, as it was, our chair reminded us, this is a land use issue. And we're looking at a conditional use permit. The fact, my final reference, I'm looking at it, and I do have questions that I need to address. But this is an industrial use along the port, and that's what we've designated the land for. And I think approaching it that way, we're being asked to look at this solar array on a conditional purpose. So, which also provides us the opportunity to condition for it. So, a couple of things that have come up, which were of concern of mine, mainly on the power line and the, how we address those. I'm supportive of Mr. Morzini's conditional, condition, asking that these be grounded. If at all possible, I've heard that that can't be done. It does concern me a little bit that we haven't heard back from PG&E. Know them a little bit. I don't, not to bash PG&E, but, you know, I don't want something to come back three months down the line after this is approved, we think it's done, and they say they need to add something different. That concerns me a little bit. But again, I'm not the power expert, and it's just something that I would, but I would echo what Commissioner Morzini had brought up, that for the purposes of what we're looking at, trying to minimize the aesthetic impacts, I think that's the best solution. I understand Mr. Lebig's concerns about, and should rightly be addressed, about impacts to the flood control. I just, but again, that's something I would support. I am also, as far as the mitigation of, for wildlife, specifically which came with Swanson Hawk, certainly, we're all concerned about that. We enjoy seeing them around our, the rural parts of our area. And I think that's something we have considered. I'm not sure, I read through the environmental checklist, and we did bring up the, the, the biologist went out and did a reconnaissance method view of the area and did find some potential nests. Although, I did not see in the checklist report that any validation of if they were indeed nests. What I did see, however, in the mitigation and monitoring plan, and correct me if I'm wrong, David, that should we actually encounter, should the port or the applicant, as they are, before they plan, do any grading or any other work out there, it is required that a biologist go out there and do a survey, a complete survey, correct?
Yeah, we'll need to pre-construction surveys for-
And if they find one, we have, it's pretty clear in there that we are, they cannot do anything with it until past a certain season. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, you know, I think, my perspective and on that is, you know, again, it's, you know, it is our city's, we went through the proper process, however, whatever mitigation, and just to draw one other part about the JPA. Our responsibility is just to mitigate for it, is that correct? As a city, paying a fee is, could be part, I'm not, I'm not understanding where this argument is coming from. Are we supposed to pay into the JPA or not? I'm just not versed in it.
For Swanson Hawk, in this area, there's typically the two, two forms of mitigation when it's required. It's either paying the per acre fee or securing conservation easements to replace the habitat area that's lost. And if I recall, once you're over 40 acres, then you need to secure conservation easements. You cannot just pay the per acre fee anymore, which the project exceeds 40 acres. And this is for an area where, when it's been determined that it is foraging habitat for the Swanson Hawk.
But it's predicated on the fact of whether or not it's a foraging habitat, correct?
Correct.
And define, the definition of a foraging habitat, where it's, I mean, that's where I'm a little confused. Because I, this is now used to, this is now used to basically, as Mr. Lukin brought up, pump in, so it isn't a protected area.
No, not in this particular case. There are other, you know, mitigation sites that are, and rookeries that are, you know, in the vicinity of the project. But these four sites are not part of that, those mitigation areas. There are several characteristics that define what, you know, especially what prime foraging habitat, you know, would be. And many that is actually agricultural areas where there isn't a lot of trees, there are prey species available, low-lying vegetation, and then with at least trees in the perimeter were for nesting sites. One of the more important, what we're, really, that we're talking about here, nests are one thing. Where if you do have an active nest, then there are protocols to avoid that nest during the breeding season. For example, that's exactly what we're dealing with right now in the Bridge District. We do have an active nest out there that we are monitoring. But the mitigation is, the second set of mitigation really is for the foraging habitat. That's what the JPA is all about.
Okay. So, I mean, I think, would we, would we, as a commission, to approve this? I mean, so, I'm just trying to think, I'm trying to get the, give the public the assurance that we are following protocol and mitigating this as set forth. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how we can.
Yeah, the site has been evaluated for Swanson Hawk, not only for nests, but it's foraging habitat. And it's the opinion of the consulting biologists on the project that this is, you know, marginal habitat at best and that the prime habitat really is the adjacent, in the bypass area. And those findings are recounted in the environmental document.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Morzini.
David, while you're talking about that, I'm sorry to interrupt. But it seems to me like when we established the Habitat Management Plan, that all of South Port was determined to have a Swanson Hawk and a giant garter snake issue. And other locations, say, in the north area where the rivers is, for example, they had an elderberry beetle issue. And that was a separate thing. They identified the habitat, and then they had to mitigate it. But it's my understanding, if this area is in South Port, that it's blanketed in because every project that we've had in South Port, there was never a discussion about what kind of impact it would have on Swanson Hawk or garter snakes. It was all blanketed in, there wasn't a project that was exempted in South Port from having to participate in the JPA. And that's the way I understand it. And if that's the case, then there's a simple question, or a simple answer to the question is, if all South Ports included, then it doesn't matter whether there are Swanson Hawks there or not, that they have to participate in the program. in the, in the program.
Yeah, you know, and-
I'm sorry.
Chris has turned, but I, I just want to remind you that when we went back years ago, there was actually that, that whole study out in Southport, and those people followed the Swenson Hawk for five miles in the flying, because they found one or two in the area. That, that was my concern. It's not the project, it's just the concern of what we think we're supposed to be doing out there.
And I, I, thank you. And I think that's what I'm trying to get and understand, you know? And whether or not the port's land, which is outside, on the other side of the Bridge Canal, I'm sorry, the Barge Canal, falls within that scope, would be another question I would ask. So, I think that is something that I, I feel like I need a little more resolution on. It's, it's too big of a question mark at this point for me. On, on the visibility, I, you know, that seemed to me, I actually thought that would be the biggest issue here, and the residents in the neighborhood, rightly so, voiced it. And, you know, I did look through the environmental checklist and, and, and found some discrepancies, and, you know, I, I didn't do the math, as Commissioner Lebig did, to kind of figure out what, what the proper height was, but, you know, just looking at paragraphs on page five of the environmental checklist, paragraph C, you know, the second to the last sentence, just, it just is unlikely that these trackers and overhead power lines be visible, other than on top of the east levee. That's the threshold we need to address. We're making that statement in the environmental checklist, yet we're seeing visuals where it's going to stand fourteen feet above the levee. I think one of the things we asked for in the last workshop was, you know, some visual, and we got it at ground level off the levee, and we see them. So, we're not, that, the statement isn't quite right. And I'm not saying I'm not willing to approve it, because it's going to have an impact. And I think, I think we all understand that, to get this type of, of project approved in, in, in this, this type of project, which, which we all understand its, its, its benefits to the community. We understand there's going to be impacts, but I, I have to agree with Commissioner Lebig. It's just, we kind of set forth, at least I had the impression from the last workshop, that there would be very little impact, and yet the photo simulations in the packet show some. I have not been, I don't know anybody that lives right there, so I can't look out their second-story window to see what they see. And so I think that would be something that I would be interested in clarifying, either through mitigation or just clarification. So, you know, again, I, I have to stipulate, these, these are questions that we should be asking as a commission. I am supportive of it, but it does seem like that we have a little, little bit of clarification to go, and maybe-
Thank you, Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you.
Ms. Blackburn, do you have any additional comments?
I am in support of it, I'll keep this brief. I'm in support of the project, but I do have some of the same concerns that my fellow commissioners have as well. So I think I would like to see those answered, or at least addressed.
All right, so, and I'm, I'm also supportive of the project, but it seems like there are questions to be answered. So the, the action before us, as the recommendation from the staff, is to move forward with approval, but we also, as you know, have, can take a, approach a deny, continue with some direction on particular items to the staff. So, at this point, I, I'm looking for some kind of direction from the commission.
I would like to move this to, can we pick a date certain at this point?
Well, the next available date would be August 5th. In view of the issues that have been raised tonight, that would probably be aggressive. However, I would suggest that you do move it to the 5th of August, and then for the members of the audience who came here, to encourage them to check with us, beginning on the beginning of that week, on August 2nd, to make certain that it is not being continued to a later date.
Is it possible to move it to the next meeting? Is that, is that meeting full, or?
Oh, right now, the-
That would be a month out.
Right now, at this point in time, there's, there's definitely room on the August 5th agenda, so that would be the option, the first option that would be available to you. And should we not be able to make the meeting on the 5th, then it would be moved to the 19th. So, it sounds like the best action would be to continue it to August 5th, with the understanding that it-
I think that-
If the issues are not resolved, it could be moved later.
I would support moving it to the 5th, and with the option to continue it from staff.
So, in, with the continuance, Mr. Lebig, it's helpful, I think, to staff to outline and provide some direction. So there's a, I believe you're about to make a motion to continue to August 5th.
Yes. With some additional information regarding the undergrounding of transmission lines, where possible, and maybe where not possible, to address the Swenson Hawk mitigation issues, potentially allowing some time for a response from PG&E, and maybe seeking out response from PG&E, to come up with some mitigation measures regarding aesthetics from houses, Jefferson Boulevard, from the recreation path on top of the levee. And to come up with alternatives to fencing, or at least provide information of impacts of fencing.
Can I get some clarification on that last one? Because one of the things we talked about at the workshop was, I think we had agreement that we didn't want to, by virtue of approving this project, exclude future public access to city property. And I think that's part of what that fencing would do. If there's no access there, then you don't need a fence, but if, for the potential of, of public access to, to that general area, I think that would be appropriate also, that, that, you following what I'm saying?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's, that, that is agricultural land, and, and although it's been leased for sheep grazing and stuff for years and years, now we have a project here. The public should be able to enjoy that, that area someday. It has, it has furnished on the deepwater channel, just like the, the east side does. I would, I would not want this project to eliminate the potential for public access to that general area in the future.
I agree.
So I think, I think your motion, because it's also on port property, and there's some restrictions regarding home and security, I think having something about the fencing to have more, more background about access and so forth.
And to-
Just to provide you some guidance on that.
And to Mr. Lukin's point, I mean, that is port property, and, and he has the key to the lock, and he's going to make that determination, but I think it's important that we send this thing along with the concern that we don't want to preclude the public in the future by virtue of this project.
If possible, okay.
You know, could I add one comment?
Okay, this, we're, we're developing a motion, so, okay, thank you.
I know, but my comment goes back to what Commissioner Ledesma was talking about. We, we talked about the visuals, and I guess I don't understand quite how Russ got all of his dimensions and how high it goes. I'd like to see something, so we have a better idea of how that works, too.
You adding that in?
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion?
Yes, there's a motion, a second, before we move to action. I just would like to ask council, because, because this is a jurisdiction for us, just about zoning, is this, is, is what we're asking within our jurisdiction, all these requirements of staff? Okay, I'm getting a nod. Thank you, Mr. Rickles.
Yes, they are.
Thank you. So there's a motion, I believe it's second by Mr. Ledesma. All those in favor of continuing to August 5th with those items, please say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you for those of you concerned about this matter who spoke with us this evening. And we'll move on to item number four, which is a public workshop on the proposed West Coast Recycling Conditional Use Permit, number 10-7. This is for folks that haven't, have not been to one of our meetings before. A public workshop's a little different than a hearing. We'll be hearing from staff, we'll be taking some public comment, and then we'll add some comment as well. So we won't be taking action tonight, though, so, just to provide you with that frame. Mr. Tilly?
Yes. Tonight, we are here to, for this item is a workshop on the proposed West Coast Recycling Guarantee conditional use permit. This also is a port project, however, this project will be located on the port's main north terminal, near the harbor and industrial entrance to the port, just west of there. My, my staff report tonight is going to be relatively brief, because the applicant does have a formal presentation on PowerPoint for you this evening, so I'm going to provide just an overview, and they will provide more detail. The project site is about fifteen acres, and there's really is two components to the project. The first is the metals recycling facility itself, which essentially would, would be, bring in, you know, crushed vehicles and other metals that have been, already been free of fluids and other materials, and we brought to this facility via truck, and then loaded into the shredder facility, onto conveyor belts and into the shredder, where it would ultimately produce some, sizes, pieces of metal roughly the size of your fist that would be exported via ship, is, is the, to ultimate destinations, particularly in Asia. It's an enclosed facility where the actual shredding operation occurs, although the, there is yard area and cranes, and the conveyor belts would, would not be enclosed, those would actually be visible, but the actual shredding operation where the, where the motor and the, the actual operation is, is located within the building. This project tonight, we are, we had a workshop, we, this is actually our second workshop on it. We actually did a community-wide workshop on it last, last week, which was attended by about forty people, provided a summary of that, that workshop, and the staff report, and the issues that were raised there that, that night, many of which we would expect to be very germane to the planning commission's role in this project tonight. Second part of this project that's important, and I want to discuss how it, how it pertains to project, and what the planning commission's role is, there is, we, part of the project is proposing to construct a new main port entrance. This will be located west of the port's current main entrance, and this would initially serve the West Coast project. City is applying through, for CDVG funding for that particular entrance, and hence the environmental document that you received includes NEPA, National Environmental Policy Act, in addition to the SEQA document. Since those funds ultimately originate with HUD at the federal level, NEPA is required. So when the project comes back for hearing, we're seeking decision, we're seeking action on the NEPA document as well. It's not something we do very often here in the city and with the commission, but we did a joint NEPA and SEQA document here, because there, there certainly is a lot of overlap between the resource areas and need both documents. We will not require any action from the commission related to the new main port entrance itself, per se. However, due to the funding, funding stream for that, we will seek action on the environmental document, which is, is necessary for that road, and as well as the project. So from an environmental standpoint, we're considering it in the project in its totality, even though the commission's role would be on the use permit for the metals recycling facility itself. There were, as mentioned, we did do a workshop at, through the community last week, that was, that was well-attended. The applicant provided a presentation, and we answered many questions that came up from the, from the community during that workshop. Those, again, are summarized in your staff report. At this time, I would like to conclude my presentation. I'll answer any questions you may have at this time, or else the applicant does have a PowerPoint that will go over the facility in much more detail for you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. I'd like to invite the applicant. You can raise the podium, too, I don't, yeah.
Okay. A little more protection from you guys.
We can hear you better, I think.
How's that?
That's great, thanks.
Great. I just thought I would take us through first, oh, sorry, I'm David Gigerich, the president of West Coast Recycling. I wanted to take us through tonight, just briefly, the overall benefits of this project to West Sacramento, both the environmental, as well as the economic benefits. First off, this is going to continue the process that the port's been going through as far as attracting more sort of green or environmentally friendly type of projects, being focused in the recycling business, and it's really going to establish West Sacramento as a leader now, within this whole region, as far as metals recycling, because it's going to give it a new and direct access to the world markets, which that's going to have a number of different economic impacts directly here in Sacramento. First and foremost is, this is going to create sixty new jobs, forty of which, at least forty, roughly forty, would be union labor. The additional would be office and, and those types of jobs. It's a twenty-five million dollar investment from our company to build this project, but the economic impact goes beyond that, because what it does in our industry, it's a little different. You know, a lot of people might look at this and say, well, you're introducing a large new competitor into the region, and you're going to displace current people that are in this industry. But really what it is, is there's kind of a value chain in scrap. At the top, you have the steel mills that actually melt the metal. Below them, you have what we do, which is prepare that metal to go into the steel mill, and we do this in the shredding process, which actually upgrades the metal, not to get too complicated, to the highest value for that mill. So we, we create the highest grade that they buy, the most expensive grade, by the process of going through the shredder. So now what we're going to give all the local people that are in our industry, and scrap dealers and the such, are access to be able to sell directly to us at a much higher price, and they're probably currently selling, quite frankly. Not to mention, they don't have to truck this product now from here to the Bay Area, where the other shredders that are in this region. There's only two shredders in all of Northern California, which, to not get too sidetracked, but to give you a perspective about the economic need here, there's seven shredders in Iowa, there's, you know, it's just so grossly underserved in this whole Northern California area. So it, it's going to have a number of positive economic effects way beyond just the individuals who work there. There's going to be different things, you know, it's going to, from, sorry, I just sometimes just continue to talk. To give you a little bit of a view, and what we like to say is, this is not your father's scrapyard. This isn't the Fred Sanford type of image of a scrap business of, you know, vehicles piled up and falling over fences and things like that. This is a true, you know, twenty-first century industrial type of process. The capital involved, like I said, is over twenty-five million dollars, and so what you get is a completely different environment than you probably would anticipate seeing in this type of industry. Again, developing a number of different things from economic and environmental standpoint, allowing us to build a, a very clean, safe facility, creating green-oriented jobs, and really being able to do more capacity at the port than would be able under any other method of metals recycling. And what this process is, to put it in the most sort of graphic, elementary terms, is, you know, you get your beautiful green car that gets fed into a shredder via an in-feed conveyor, is what it's called, and then it goes into the closed system, which is a box, which shreds that car, takes about twenty-eight seconds to shred a car into fist-sized pieces or smaller, and then separates those metals between the non-metallic aluminums, brass, copper, and then the metallic with all the steel and the ferrous, and then what we call the fluff, which is all the other product, as far as the seats and the dashboards and things like that. And it comes through, and it goes through in what's called a wet process. So we actually, and I'll talk about that as we go through the environmental benefits, but we recycle our own water. We'll capture all water within our four-and-a-half acre pad of that, and we'll recycle and reuse that water over and over through our system. And what it does, it allows us to then spray the water onto that material in the box, keeping the dust down, obviously, but helping us separate that fluff, and then we actually mix it with some powdered cement products and other things to stabilize it as far as dust levels, and then we store it in a three-sided concrete bunkers, and that's taken off to the appropriate landfills and dealt with in the most environmental way. It's actually used for cover at different landfills at night, but we still pay them to take it. And as far as environmental impact, that's not direct, but more indirect, is there's currently thousands of truck trips happening between here and the Bay Area along I-80, moving the product that is processed to a certain degree in this city, and then trucked down to the Bay Area for finished processing, and then ultimately loading onto a ship. We'll obviously be able to do that here. And again, that's also going to have some economic benefits, because the number of our, what we consider customers, those bringing the product into us, are people that currently would be driving that ninety miles. Well, whether I'm the owner of that company or I'm the driver of that truck, I'm going to get more turns per day. I get paid for deliveries, I don't get paid to wait in line on the Bay Bridge and things like that. So this isn't a negative impact from an economic standpoint for, we believe, a lot of different groups that would be involved in this. We know another big concern that we heard at our workshop that we had last week was about the noise. So we wanted to very specifically highlight the testing that we've done in Nebraska. We had city council members from West Sacramento come out to Nebraska. It's been probably about a year ago, it's been about a year and a half ago that we started this process with West Sacramento. But we did a number, number of different test points around, in and around our facility in Nebraska, to just give the levels of sound and reading. And as you'll see, all the sound checks were under, that were, within five hundred feet, were less than seventy decibels, seventy-one decibels of four-twenty-five, but at five hundred below seventy. And as you'll see on the next slide, we, we show- you'll see on the next slide, we show the ring that goes out five hundred feet, and there's no area businesses within that circle. So we really feel like, well, we know from the road, you won't hear our facility, you'll hear the road, and on the other side of the road, you won't know that we're operating whether we are or we aren't. In fact, that was one of the comments by one of our guests when we arrived in Nebraska, was, we pulled through the gate and he said, oh, I thought we were going to get to see you guys on a day you were running, and we said, we are running, and he said, you are? And I said, yes, and so we drove closer and closer and closer and still, until, you know, you're finally fifty feet away or less, and it's, oh, okay, I do hear. So we're taking many different things to do that as far as on the setbacks and trying to position the facility as far back as we can and within that right radius point from a noise standpoint. We're also, other concerns we heard were about sightlines, and we just heard a lot about that going on right now, and so we're going to do everything we can, and we talked about the new intersection that's going to happen, as far as, we do have the ability to do landscaping along there, we're going to do different levels of visual fencing and other things, so that you're not going to look into the facility from the street, you're not going to see the facility, I think heights, we'll talk about exactly, I'll let them give us the specifics, but as you'll see from a number of different graphics, which we have the photos around, so we don't need to spend a lot of time on these photos, but just showing the different sightlines, and we've done the different looks of what it'll look like from the different streets. A last concern that we heard from some of the area landowners around there in the front that we would want to address is traffic impact from this, and, you know, will our trucks be lined up on the road, and what kind of trucks are coming, and are we going to have broken-down trucks laying out on Harbor Boulevard and things like that? Again, one thing to look at is where we sit and where we reside in this food chain, which is, we're a little, we're a step above sort of the, what I'd call the lowest level peddler, which goes out and collects at night and things like that. Typically, they bring into the scrapyard that's below us, which is a kind of a feeder yard or consolidator of those types of metals, and then they'll bring a larger vehicle into our yard. We just buy more in volume, so you'll have, not that we wouldn't accept people coming in of any size loads, but the typical will be a much larger load, a much, I guess, more professional-level type of truck, and what we've done is designed, more importantly, I think with the new driveway, is the ability to bring the trucks all the way in and down and enter our site from the back, and then we'll be able to bring them all the way back up to the scales, containing all truck traffic and any kind of line or anything else within our property, and not backing traffic up to Harbor Boulevard whatsoever. Again, just kind of an aerial view of what the site map looks like, it's a little difficult to see from up there. A little more blown-up version, you can see down the left side would be the driveway, and then turning in just at the corner and coming up to the facility and bringing it over. Other last points is, you know, with the creation of this, we're going to be utilizing the conveyor system that's existing at the port, that's been underutilized for a number of years, so that's another advantage. And I think that's it. I'll try to be short, because I'm sure you guys have a lot of questions, too.
Thank you very much. Actually, we have a number of folks who'd like to speak from the public. So I think we'll hear from members of the public who've come tonight to speak, and then I'll bring it back to the commission for questions in some direction. First up is Denise Seals, followed by Jim Brewer.
Thank you. Again, my name is Denise Seals, I'm the president and CEO of the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce, and once again, while we do not endorse specific projects, projects of this nature, that have been a successful model in several other states, they bring state-of-the-art green technology, not only in the product that they produce, but in the plant design that they'll bring to the port, to our city, and to the business community. Project is self-contained, as you heard, it gathers its own storm drain runoff and then reuses it, has minimum impact to local businesses through what appears to be very careful project design, and it creates jobs. Twenty-five million dollars in capital construction improvements at the port, and more than sixty long-term jobs for our community and the region is not insignificant. And I learned today a fact that I found really interesting, and that's that seventy percent of steel that's made in the United States, made by American workers in the United States, comes from scrap metal. And so sound, modern projects of this nature not only support jobs in our community, but support jobs all over our country and help the economic stability of our country. So the chamber would encourage your support of this type of project at the port. You know, and I also forgot to mention that it also, in your report, which you've read, you'll note it increases ship traffic at the port by an estimate of at least one ship per month. So it would seem that this is a, that a project of this type would be a wonderful addition to our business community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Brewer, followed by Terrell Lee.
Good evening, commissioners. My name, for the record, is Jim Brewer, and in looking through the documents that were provided, it's a very long document, I think it's a hundred and fifty-some pages when you look at all the pieces of it, and it's just a lot of information. Right off the bat, I'd like to say, I'm in support of this, this is a modern facility, it has all the things that we need in our community, a job producer, an investor, our capital investments, all the things that Denise just spoke to you about. However, there's three lines in here that give me a great deal of concern, and they're on page two, and I'm not sure what part of the document is, but it has to do with dust, and the word that they're using is called fluff, and it's contained in a part of that process that you saw the graphics on, and it's dampened down, wetted, and it's sealed, and it's put away and used as a daily cover or something in the landfill. However, it also gets away from them every once in a while, and when the system is brand-new and really, everything is working just perfect, it'll happen that way, but as it begins to wear, or if maintenance falls off, maybe we had another bad time someday, heaven forbid in the future, and things begin coming a little looser, that fluff will get away from them. The facility that he referred to, the president of this company referred to over in the Bay Area, if you've looked at their facility, you can see some of that fluff, is the information I've been given. So it is, some of that fluff is very dangerous also. I'm not sure how they deal with that, so, and my suggestions, as we go through this process, is to look at how that's being handled, not only for today's view, but for our long-term view. Also, find a more comprehensive method of containing that process or that fluff, and making sure that it doesn't get off at their facility, because our port is also used for recreation, it's also used for our fishing, it's used for a lot of other purposes other than just shredding metal and producing whatever noise they produce. It's a highly desirable facility, but I believe they can address those if they contain it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, followed by Matt Kelly.
Again, commissioners, hello. Terrell Lee, Bridgeway Lakes Drive, and obviously, I'm about jobs, middle-class paying jobs, obviously, sounds like a pretty good project. Hopefully, in the construction of it, maybe I could get, start getting a paycheck and taking it home to my family, which I'm pretty sure my wife would be more than happy to have me bring home the bacon again. As far as the dust, believe you me, you guys, if they do have an issue with that, I will be one of the first to keep coming to my city council to make everyone aware that they are having a dust problem, that's affecting my community. Other than that, again, my major concern is use the port to rebuild middle class, because we've been so decimated with this economy and cheap labor, we need to do something.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Kelly, Matt Kelly. Followed by Mr. Derek Peterson.
Good evening, commissioners, I'm here once again, much like last time, I think this is a wonderful project. I think it is, again, an economic engine that brings capital to your port, capital that's needed. I believe that soon, with projects like this, your port's going to reach a critical mass where they're able to support themselves regardless of whatever may be going on as far as the shipping venues go. I would like to urge you to approve this project, I've known about this project for quite some time. We're pleased with the conversations that we've had with these gentlemen, they certainly seem to have the recycling business, they know just about everything from the conversations I've had with them. It seems to me that this is something that is definitely not, does not exist in our area, why not make this area the first one to have it? So I would urge your approval, certainly you may have questions and conditions, and I look forward to hearing whatever those may be. Thanks.
Thank you. Derek Peterson, followed by Tim Campbell.
Hello, and thank you for the time. My name's Derek Peterson, I'm the president of Local 18 ILW Longshore Division, so of course you know I'm in favor of this, I'm the one loading the ship, but we hear a lot of all the projects tonight about good, stable jobs for West Sacramento, and this is one of them. These are jobs that are going to come into our community that people could afford by houses, raise their children here. I'm raising my kids, three of them, third generation here. I'm very proud of my town, I think we've grown up a lot since I've been around, and I just really hope that you guys see what this company is worth, it utilizes the things this city owns. One, our port, our port needs this job, which then in returns could feed more people, keep the money in West Sacramento, and all around, I think it benefits all of us if we utilize the things we have and the lands we have, and that's what I think we're going to be using here. And it gives us a strong, solid base of an employer in our port, which will welcome more people to come in, and it won't be as needed to, oh my God, what are we going to do, and how are we going to keep these gates open? So please consider this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And finally, Tim Campbell.
Hello, I'm Tim Campbell, I'm a representative of the ILW Local Seventeen, I'm chief steward at the Port of Sacramento. One thing I want people to remember is this property is zoned for this type of projects and properties around it. Houses were built around this project, and people come together to fight against projects like this, but, you know, it's like building a house in an airport area, once you get a house in an airport area, you can't complain about the airport noise, because you knew what you bought into before you bought the house. The port was built to create jobs for workers for the union and stimulate the economy, and in economic crisis that we're in now, we encourage and support environmentally free companies like the recycling plant, we've met with these gentlemen on a couple occasions, and they've answered all the questions that we have. Do you want to go ahead and get that?
Sorry. I forgot to mention, everyone, please turn off your cell phones, please silence your cell phones, including commissioners.
Can I apply for permission?
I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
You said not, you didn't say anything about silence.
I know, I forgot that announcement. I'm so sorry, continue, please.
Not to mention, like, they were talking about freeing up the roadways, and this is huge for freeing up the roadways and also helping freeing up taxpayer monies that have to repair the roadways, and bringing these trucks through into a protective environment instead of an open environment where people's families and lives depend on this stuff, this is a huge thing, and for the community of West Sacramento, it's viable for the existence of the Port of Sacramento to get something like this in here for a long-term contract for long-term jobs. This will create more than sixty jobs, because it's not including long-shoreside jobs for once a month when a ship comes in, so there's going to be eighty to ninety people working through this project, you know, this is a big thing, and we, the ILW Union, back and support and encourage this to the fullest. We urge you to go forward with the permitting process, and we thank you for your time and hope this gets granted sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more requests to speak, and as a reminder, this is a public workshop, so if there are questions of the applicant, the staff, other observations, Mr. Ledesma, ready to speak?
Sure. Thank you. Thanks, Chair Sandin. First, thanks for the presentation and the workshop and ability to kind of comment on this. I do have a few questions that, from the staff reports and the environmental checklist, but, you know, first I'll state that this is a very positive project to be looking at. It does kind of resonate from all the perspectives that we're drawn upon from economic development to the type of business we're going in, and so I do appreciate that part, but it's part of our due diligence to make sure we're covering our bases, again, because this is a, excuse me, conditional use permit, so you'll forgive my scrutiny to make sure we get this done the right way, and just answer some questions. First, you mentioned, and David and the applicant can answer, you're already mitigated for truck traffic, kind of from the, what the design of the roadway going into the property, the applicant did, but I did not see in the staff report kind of how much it anticipates generating, I mean, truck trips.
Yeah, the truck trip information is summarized in the project's traffic study, which is then further refined in the environmental document. We do have one potentially significant impact with respect to traffic, and that's at the southbound approach to Harbor at Industrial, and so we will need to restripe that intersection to change the turning movements, but that is the only traffic mitigation that we'll need for this project. We have a pretty extensive traffic analysis we do with all projects, and we can provide that, the whole traffic study to the commission for the hearing if you desire.
I think so, I think it would just be helpful to see, and it looks as though they're starting, they've already anticipated how they're going to deal with it on Harbor, I mean, I'm sorry, at the facility, and I did see that about what the mitigation will be on Harbor, just it didn't really say, articulate, what do we expect? So I don't need to go into it much more than that, so that, because this is a workshop, so we can see it the next time. I'm curious on, and it's just a process issue, for the new entrance, we are applying for a grant, a CBD grant, and we would fund, you know, as it says, design and construction of new main entrances, are we, there's no assurance we're going to get that, I'm just trying to understand what, if there's a plan B or how we might.
Certainly, it's not automatic that we would receive that, although we do believe our prospects are very, are very good to receive that funding, that's economic development funding, that's how this associated with the project.
Well, I think that's just, I don't know, there may not be a better answer, Mike, I mean, just.
Mr. Lukin?
Hello, Mike Lukin, Port Manager, maybe I can answer that question. You know, essentially, we've done a number of projects, some of which the planning commission has had before, the SAC Port project, and other projects which have used the city's traffic model and then done their corresponding traffic impact studies, and then in the city's capital improvement plan is actually the movement of the main entrance of the port to, from its current location to the location just east of Beacon. And so we've been planning on this for quite some time, and the burden, if you will, falls on the applicant in this case to construct that road, and what we are trying to do is not place that burden entirely on one applicant, and also try to relieve a burden on the city, frankly, that whose responsibility it is to move that port entrance when they do the second phase of the Harbor Boulevard project, which is a whole reconfiguration of the Harbor, Del Monte, and industrial intersections in the future for the city. And so what we did is we have done some extensive meetings with the state community development block grant program, they're very supportive of the project, and we're in the process of not only doing the environmental document, but submitting financial information from the company to the state CDBG program to fund, to potentially fund a grant to the city for that intersection. But ultimately, if we're not successful, we very firmly believe we will be successful because of the positive response from the state. have to get reimbursed by any future projects that would come forward.
Right. And we've approached some projects on the residential side or whatever to make sure that is, is shared down the road. I guess my, you've answered my question since that, how we are, how we're going to approach it so one doesn't inhibit the other from actually occurring. So, you know, we need, we need to complete the thought. And so if, you know, if it doesn't happen, we have a backup plan. So you've answered the question.
One other finite detail that you might see or might be a question of other commissioners is that the CDBG grant will likely be approved af, it will trail a little bit the actual approval of this project and potentially the construction schedule of this project. What we are able to do at the port on an interim basis is allow the applicant with some fence line modifications to utilize the main entrance to the port. That's not very practical on a long-term basis. But if the project is constructed prior to the, the completion of the new entrance, they can utilize the main entrance on Harbor, and the traffic study analyzed that impact and, and found it insignificant.
But to your point, we, we have it set up so that it will be an interim. The, the main, new main entrance is going to get built one way or the other.
Right. It would work, you know, on an interim basis from a traffic standpoint. It's just not, not.
No, it's not ideal.
It does, it's not ideal from the remainder of the port operations.
Agreed. Okay. That was my question. Thank you. Okay, for time.
Thank you.
I, I have a few more, so that's okay. All right. Thank you. One thing I noticed, and maybe the applicant can answer, just, it just came, came in reading the description and then the environmental, and, and maybe staff knows, but it seems that that the facility will use a lot of water. And for the, all the great words that you guys brought, fluff and hulks and all those sorts of rather cool words that you, part of this industry. But I guess it's for the fluff, is that right? The water gets injected. And my question really is, it's just simple, and you may have answered it already. So we're injecting a lot, it seems like we're choosing a lot of water for this process. Am I to understand, based on what I heard, it's all recycled, so there's no wastewater residue coming out of it?
Yeah, they are, they are, the whole portion, the main portion of the site, they tend to collect the stormwater and actually reuse that as part of the shredding operation. That's, it needs the water in there because that's how they control some of the emissions. And so they have a store, even have a storage tank onsite for that stormwater. Ultimately, if that does need to be disposed of, there's a temporary discharge permit requirements through the Regional Sanitation District, and they'll likely have to have a sampling, you know, program for, before they discharge any of that stormwater since it is industrial, industrial grade. And Mr. Keck can elaborate on that for you if you.
Well, I guess my question is, and just, it's maybe a little process, is, you're talking about just the stormwater captured and stored, and if they don't need it all, they'll have to discharge it. Is that, that's what you're speaking of?
Yes.
But there is water that you, that's used for the process of the fluff.
And that's, that's the stormwater that they would use?
I, I understand that. But, but the water goes in the containment chamber where the shredding takes place. Does all of it get absorbed, or is there, does it come out directly into sewage? Does that make sense?
It's a closed-loop system.
Oh, that's.
So, so everything that goes into the shredder being sprayed on the fluff is captured in that four and a half acres. Everything is recaptured. So it's just a closed.
It's just, that's, you answered my question. So, because I was, I didn't see it. It doesn't run off, doesn't get put back into our system or into the.
It's closed into our system.
Okay. Thank you. That, that's all I needed to know. The question did get brought up, and just, because it was a question of mine on kind of the containment area for the fluff and where this is occurring. And it, it was actually a two-part question for me. One is from a noise standpoint, and the other one is from a containment standpoint. I'm looking at you both because I'm not sure who's best apt to answer this. But this is a relatively new facility. This will be a new facility, so I'm sure it's, it would be done right. I was more concerned about noise as time wore on, the noise from the, from the, from the recycling and the conveyor and the shredding. I don't know, you took some of our council members to a site in Nebraska, I think it was.
To our site in Nebraska.
Your site in Nebraska.
Yes.
How old is that site? And is there?
Shredder itself is probably about five years old.
Is that the oldest?
Seven years old now, I guess. Seven.
Is that as old as the, the technology is that you're using?
No, the technology, well, the original shredder was built in 1971, the first one ever. And obviously, it's continued to evolve to the point it's at today, which is now there's, you know, sound dampening, there's air systems and, and other things that didn't exist, obviously, back in the past. But we have those, yes, in Nebraska. We're building a very similar system to what we have in Nebraska, just with the newer.
With the newer, and I guess that was my, my question, because if they weren't hearing anything with their own ears.
And there, there's not a lot that would wear out, that would cause the noise to break down, because a lot of it's concrete.
Right.
And then the metal-on-metal pieces, there's wear pieces in a shredder that you're constantly grates and things like that. Those are just wear parts that you're constantly replacing.
Right.
Changing out hammers and things like that. So there's the maintenance on that, just like there would be any machine tool. But what it's housed in and the sort of sound dampening types of things, that it's concrete and, and things like that.
Okay. Yeah, because I was, that was my concern, is that as time wore on, and I'm just used to 19th century, 20th century, you know, where it just begins to wear and it gets louder.
Well, and, and things in a shredder, anything that is wearing, you're, you're replacing because it's metal-on-metal and it's part of the process.
Is it a 24/7 operation?
No, it's, it's one shift. Normal operating hours, probably seven to four or something.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ledesma. Other questions from commissioners, comments? Mr. Liebig.
Okay. Thank you. Of course, I encourage every step to making the port successful and green. This project shows great potential and will provide jobs while contributing to the overall port's health, while reducing carbon dioxide emissions in the whole region. I have some general, simple questions. Hopefully, some of these are general. What gets stored in the warehouse? I haven't figured that one out yet.
I'm not going to talk. I could just stay up here, I guess. The warehouse would be other metals, materials, copper, bundles. It, it's just going to be either parts and supplies for the shredder or different higher grade alloys are stored indoors.
Okay. If you want to stay there, I've got, I've got a few of them. Thanks. Where will the hulks be stockpiled prior to the shredding?
No, that's a very good question, and we've, we've met, again, with a lot of the landowners across the street because their biggest concern is the sightlines and sort of that typical view of unprocessed scrap is really not that attractive, and you don't want to see it. And the advantage, again, of being in a shredding operation is you don't hold on to unprocessed inventory because you don't have to. We've owned every different type of scrapyard that does shearing and clipping and baling and shredding. What happens at the other types of processors is you just can't keep up because shearing's a very slow process. And you put it in, and you cut three feet, and you push it, and it takes hours and hours and hours to work through a pile. With a shredder, you have an in-feed conveyor, and you grind it. And like I said, you can grind a car in 28 seconds. So a lot of times, you'll even see unloading from a truck onto the conveyor, and it's going away. So where it will be stored, to answer your question, is, I don't have the site map in front of me, but it will be.
Close to the shredder as possible.
Yeah, it'll be as close to the shredder with the in-feed conveyor, will be on the Harbor side of the shredding machine.
Actually, if you can put that down, we have a camera, so then everyone, yep, there we go. Or someone found it on the PowerPoint. Thank you.
This is a bunker wall. It's going to be concrete. This side of that, the unprocessed material will replace.
It's this way. There we go. There we go. There we go, yep, perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
As I was saying, this is the side of the material, the unprocessed material will be stacked on, but it is very short-term storage, so you're not going to see the piles on this side. The pile of processed scrap will be, that pile will, it will look the same as any pile would, like a pile of sand or pile of coal. It'll look, you know, it's very uniform, symmetric. Again, that's where we'll pile up the finished product and then load from there onto a ship. So the unprocessed side will be, you know, delivered and processed as quickly as we can, and it's, it's, and again, you could see in the photos of our facility in Nebraska, and they saw, you just don't pile up unprocessed scrap in front of the shredder. You just don't. I mean, you do some, to some degree, but just not, you won't see it from the street.
Maybe I misread this then. There's a minimum of a seven-day holding period for all vehicles after the VIN number has been verified?
A lot of times, what happens is, we don't do the pre-processing of automobiles. That's something we, I didn't touch on, and I should have because it's very important. We don't do the draining of fluids, gas tanks, oils. We just do not do that. We're not in that business. There are guys that specialize in that, that are here now in Sacramento and West Sacramento and this whole area, and they'll continue to do that, and we'll buy the automobiles from them. So they'll have already gone through that process of identifying, I believe that'll be all taken care of by the time it gets to us. So they'll be the ones that buy from wreckers and different people like that.
Okay. That might be a point of clarification, just to, I read that is, that the vehicles must be held on your site for seven days. So I, maybe clarification in the report on that one. Another point of clarification, the project describes the shredding operation as inside a building. It appears that it's largely outside, but the individual components are housed?
Yes. That would be probably the more accurate description.
It says inside or enclosed multiple times throughout the environmental report.
Yeah, the, the actual, the actual shred, shredding, and, and where they, also where they collect the fluff is actually enclosed within the building. But the, certainly the conveyors are exterior to that.
I think it's building that I'm getting hung up on. Is the shredder inside a building?
The shredder's the building.
The shredder is a building. It's kind of, that's the kind of, you know.
That's how I'm understanding it, and it's not.
The actual shredding machine is kind of its own standalone building.
And just for clarification, it's been answered now several times that the whole process, or the process is within a building, and that's been given as an explanation of why the sound will be dampened, and it's not entirely accurate. So I wanted to just make sure we are clear on that one. Another one for you. You, you already mentioned that the auto shredder residue, fluff, is mixed with fly ash onsite. Is there an air quality concern over this? I'm assuming it's done outside, and fly ash, I'm assuming is powder.
Do you want to address that a little more technically?
Leonard Keck, the project manager for West Coast. The ASR at that point will be wet to the touch, and the idea is to mix the cement or fly ash, whichever one is preferred by the landfills, but to mix that with the ASR when it's still wet and use it and run it through a pug mill so that it gets thoroughly distributed, and then deposit the ASR into an enclosed area, normally with three sides and a cover. And as quickly as possible, we're going to get that ASR loaded into a vehicle and off the site. So the places that have problems with dust blowing off of ASR piles are the ones that keep huge piles. And in the past, the shredders were a dry process, so that there was a lot of dust on that pile. So we, by going with this wet process, with treating it with cement, enclosing it on three sides, and getting it into, getting it into a vehicle and off the site quickly is the way we control the dust.
Okay.
And as, as an aside, if, if there are additional questions, the two, two members of the YSA QMD are here this evening and are authorized to answer and speak to the measurements, regulations on dust, and also to speak to the methods they use. If anyone complains down the road, if we have maintenance, the person who is concerned about what happens after years, there is a process where the, the air quality district does have a method to essentially regulate us whenever, if, if that were to occur.
Okay. David, could we make a note of that in the air quality part of the environmental checklist to make sure that's been accounted for? I have one, one last question and then some, some comments. The stormwater collection use, I know that Chairman Led, or Chair Ledesma, sorry, Commissioner Ledesma asked about this. I read it, it's a bit more involved. So water is collected, stormwater, and then its first treatment is wear system. The, this solids settle out, basically, and so you're considering that the first, first treatment. Then it's used, and it's basically, I'm just saying it's going to be sprayed on everything as it's going through, falls basically to the ground where then it runs into drains again, and then goes to the second filter, which is an oil separator, and then the third filter. The third filter I was hung up on until page, I don't know, 90, where it's basically the settle, the solids settle out again. Do I have that process accurate?
As you said, the, the primary is normally removal of solids. Secondary is an oil-water separator. And in the event that we need it, we will have a fixed bed system, multi-layer media bed that we can use to remove any, any buildup of heavy metals or, or other objectionable things in the water. So that there is a, a side, a side stream system that is a complex media bed that's a commercial product that is, is used often. And in fact, there are two of these installed already in, in Sacramento. In some of the, the existing yards use this exact type of bed to clean up any water. They use it to clean it up for stormwater discharge. We will use to clean up, clean it up for recycle in the event that it's necessary.
By heavy metals. Are, are you meaning dissolved or more of a solids? And what I'm getting to here is, well, can, heavy metals can mean a lot of things in, from water quality.
Normally, this case is lead, lead and mercury.
Okay. And as far as the non-heavy metals, I know the cars are drained, and I know the air coolant systems are drained offsite or onsite. And I'm guessing antifreeze is also drained. My concern is that trace elements of these fluids will, I mean, unless you flush the entire system of a car, they're still going to be in there. If you drain your oil pan, there's, there's residual in there. That, as it's going through the shredder, I'm imagining is then mixing with this water that's coming down, going into the system. You have an oil separator and something that separates the solids, but I don't see anything to get after any of the other fluids, the non-petrolim, for example, the antifreeze or the coolant. Coolant chemicals.
We will be regulated by the air district on volatile or organic carbons. So there will be a specific, a specific level that we're permitted. It's very, very tight, again, because of the, of the tight air controls here in the dist, in the basin and in the district. So we have a very strict limit on VOCs. We will be tested for that at startup to prove that our system, the scrubber system is effective at removing that from the air.
I'm talking about in the water.
The water's being recirculated, so it doesn't go offsite.
Not, that's not how I read it as well. In the event the tank is filled, say you have a whole lot of stormwater coming in, it goes in there, you, you will discharge. It, it goes over that in the environmental document. You can either discharge into the deep water ship channel, or if there's a problem, problem being determined by periodic sampling of the effluent, it can go into the sewer system. I'm concerned about.
And, well, remember that there are two separate stormwater systems. So the industrial water, the water, the water that is close to the shredder is always kept and recirculated. A lot of the discussion you're talking about is the remainder of the area, the 15 acres, the normal storm flow over those 15 acres is much greater than even we would consume. So we have to discharge the parking lots, the roofs, and those type of things. So a lot of that discussion about sampling and discharge is for the parking lots and the roof drainage.
Do they not go to the same tank?
Pardon?
Do they not go to the same tank?
Entirely separate systems.
Okay.
If, if you look in the diagram, there are two tanks shown. One larger tank close to the shredder, and a smaller tank up next to the maintenance shop, plus the, the impoundment basin. So two entirely separate systems.
Okay. And so that helps, actually. The, the closed system then does not ever get discharged into the deep water ship channel?
No.
Okay.
And, you know, if, if there was, you know, the 500-year flood kind of thing, and we had. we had, we had to take water out of that system, we would have to prove that it's clean before we could remove it from that system.
Okay.
So we would have to test it. We would have to test it to, to allay your fears about anything like antifreeze being in the system.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you. I, I have some comments still, but that's the end of my questions. Um, I'm, uh, supportive of the project. I know I often come across with a lot of questions, but I am supportive of the project. Um, again, though, I feel that the environmental assessment, uh, may be a little bit incomplete. Um, however, you answered a lot of my questions, so thank you very much. Um, I was concerned about the storm water effluent, uh, aesthetics. Um, I was worried about stockpiling of the hulks with the whole seven day thing. Um, I think you, uh, hit on both of those. Um, I, uh, as a note to, uh, Mr. Tilly, I, I would like to see, um, as part of the project description, um, the table that's in Appendix A, it's Table 5A and B, it's the expected trip generation table. Um, so it's clear why, uh, or what the sequo analysis is based on. Um, and prior to mitigation measures, I would like, um, it's a standard statement, but, um, uh, the use will be operated in accordance with the description provided by the applicant and studies and supplemented or modified by conditions. Um, and the reason is, um, it's all based on the, well, not based on, but we're, we're talking about the reduction of carbon dioxide. And those two combined basically commit you to using ships and railcar as what was analyzed. So, uh, that's where I'm going with that one. Um, and forgive me, I actually do have a page and a half of comments, but you've addressed most of them, so I'm going to have to skip through these really fast. Um, you know what? I, uh, I think that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lebig. Um, other comments or addition, additional input?
I have a comment.
Uh, Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Uh, obviously Russ asked almost everything there was to ask, but I mean, you know, I, I guess he didn't quite take it as far as I wanted to on the one thing, and that's talking about the potential of oil grease, solvent, whatever, still being on the part. So you chopped up the car and you put it over there on the side. What do you do, the, I think that was a question I had earlier today when I spoke with one of you, and it, what do you do with that product? Because it's going to still have a residual of some type there on the stockpiled unit. How do you contain that or what do you do about it?
Easy, the easiest thing is, the diagram shows the area that's entirely contained in the industrial area, and that will all drain to the, the, uh, closed system and, and tank. Includes the finished product pile.
So this, this dark line is outlining where that closed system is?
That's the closed system.
That's the closed, so it's not just the building where the shredder...
So the other part is your parking lot.
Entire finished product pile, the inbound pile, every, everywhere that scrap's going to be laid down in that area around the shredder.
Well, because we were talking about, yes, in the shredder itself contained, but outside, it's not. Well, I guess...
The whole thing is, the whole thing is a basin that drains to the center. So this, this whole area...
Well, if that whole area, which is open, drains into your container, how much storage are you going to have? Because when it rains really hard... I mean, I don't know how much storage you really need before you have to discharge, which is back to what Russ was talking about.
That, that's a separate tank. The 600, 700, thou, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt at that.
That's okay.
That's the rainwater ones. That's, now I'm confused again.
Uh, I'm going to call up the gentleman, uh, Don Oats from KPFF that designed the, the system and try and get a little bit of help on the sizing of that tank.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Uh, Don Oats with KPFF. Um, basically what we've done is we've, uh, we've sized the tank. Uh, we're taking into account several things. There's some evaporation that goes on. There's a use that we're planning on, which is roughly 250,000 gallons per month. And then we've sized for the 4.1 acres of this area for the highest storms that we've seen throughout Sacramento's history. And so, um, what we will have is a, a storage facility has shown, it's about 900,000 gallons, and so it can take a considerable amount of that flow. Clearly, it depends when the storm hits, you know, basically and how much residual water you have in the, in the, on the tank, basically how much storage you can take, and that will define how big an event you can handle when it occurs. So what it's going to take is some operations and basically some ability to be able to, and when you go into your October wet season, then you try and make sure you drain down the tank. Clearly, that's going to be a situation that will occur anyway, because we're going to drain the tank down, um, during the operations in the summer months when we simply need the water. And so we expect when we go into January, or excuse me, into October, the tank's going to be dry and we're going to have a lot of storage.
I mean, it was, it was just my question I had from the very beginning is, what happens when the residual starts to go? Because there's always something there. I don't care...
There, there always will be something there. And so, and we, we count on, we want a residual pool in the, in the tanks, because that does allow us to have some continued settlement. And basically that will be something that in the dry seasons, you'll actually be able to drain it down and clean out the tanks should you need to on a periodic basis, so you can get rid of the, whatever residual product is in there or residual contaminants are in there. The other thing that we're going to do is, is that, um, what you have the capacity to do on the site is because it's a closed drainage system where essentially you have the concrete, it'll drain down, of course, to the catch basins. You'll also have a lip on the edge of the concrete, and that'll provide some residual storage. So in the event of a, a more extreme event, you actually can get backup throughout the system into the catch basins and the other vaults that exist and onto the pavement where you'll be able to maintain some storage prior to, um, or during that extreme event. And so we see that in the, that the, the site itself has the 100-year 24-hour capacity, um, 100-year storm, 24-hour capacity in a dry system. So there's quite a bit of storage on, on the facility.
I agree. I just am not sure I follow quite how it's going to all operate in the event we get a s, long storm going on in here, which we've had.
Which, which we agree.
Yeah. And I mean, I, I'm not trying to be difficult, because I think the whole idea is great, but I just am not quite sure I understand. What do we do if we have to just dispose of it? And see, then I'm concerned that we're disposing something that's contaminated.
So, so basically the system's set up like with the three levels of treatment. We have tra, treatment in the catch basins through a weir process. We go through an oil-water separator and then we go to the tanks. And the discharge, actually, the water that would discharge, should we have the extreme event like we're talking about...
Should be...
And what we do is, we call it a first flush isolation. So we take all that water that comes from the first, you know, two days, two weeks of storms, and that's basically what fills the tanks. And then what we do is, we basically take the water, not that's in the tank, we don't decant from that point. We actually take it from a downstream point. So it's, the, after you've had this sort of extreme event and it's been washing off a lot of the contaminants into the, into the catch basins, we take the water that comes later on in the process. And typically, that's cleaner water. And then, as Lynn pointed out, we would run it through an additional second, or, um, actually a fourth level of treatment, and that would be then sampled and then it would be discharged into the sewer.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I think it's just a concern that we have to make sure that, I'm sure you've already thought about all the options. I hadn't. I, I just know that it's possible to have that type of contamination. But with your levels of filtration going down through the sumps and everything, you should be fairly decent to discharge.
It, it, and again, it will be tested and those, uh, um, basically the testing criteria will be set up by the state.
Okay. I guess my other comment, and I mean, it's come out a number of times, and I think in your o, open forum you had, that we're really concerned about the screening of the area and what you're going to do. And I mean, when it comes back, David, I thought maybe it'd be nice to get a little better idea of how we're going to actually screen the area. I think you have, you know, a great opportunity that you're using the long driveway that'll let you back up a couple of trucks easily. And my only other concern I had deals with the school that's in that area. And when we were doing the Wickland Oil Terminal over there, there was a discussion about, we have to be careful of how many trucks are in the area because it's a school. Are we going to have any of that concern with this?
Um, no, because that school is no longer there.
Okay, fine. I didn't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Other comments, input to provide? Mr. Morzini?
Think it's, it's obvious that, um, this business has evolved over the years. I remember being 10 years old and my dad would take my brother and I out to pick up scrap metal in the summertime so we could buy shotgun shells to go hunting on Lou Argeus' property when he didn't run us off. And, and the guy used to pay us in silver dollars. He'd go in the back room and he had a cigar box, I think, or something. And so this, this is a whole lot more high-tech than that. And, and, uh, when I first saw the project, I'm thinking, is this the highest and best use that we can use the, the port property for? And probably so. Right now, there's a market, obviously, that needs to be filled. And I think it's, it's, this is one of the most interesting project, projects I've seen recently, simply because it's a matter of how you do it is, is going to be the important thing. And, um, most of the people here are, are invested in this community. We live here and, uh, we, um, are proud of our community. And it's not, I mean, the jobs are important and, and we've heard that over and over. And they're probably not any, any of us that aren't impacted by the economy right now. But we want to make sure that what we do, um, bring into the community is something that's going to be an asset. And, and I really think that this is going to be, as long as we address some of, some of the basic issues. And we've already talked about the, the technical aspect of it. So I'd like to, to talk about, quickly, about noise. I think that the decibel rating of the operation is important, but also the kind of noise it is. If it's, if it's a, a humming sound like Norcal beverage in, in the, um, part of our community, it's not a real loud noise, but when they were in operation there, it's a humming noise and it's continuous. And, um, I have tinnitus and I'm always hearing, uh, you know, a constant noise. And, and so I'm used to that, but a lot of folks in my son, where my son lives in that neighborhood, that, that constant humming is something that drives people crazy. You either get used to it or, or you don't. So I think that we need to, to make sure that we're not just looking at how many decibels the sound is. Um, another thing is, um, we have a representative police department here and, uh, they're going to be dealing with traffic and all these vehicles coming in with, uh, squished cars on them. And, and we don't want to be dodging mufflers and fuel pumps and things when you drive down the community. And I know they do some netting and that sort of stuff, but we're going to need to look into, what are we going to accept as far as transporting this kind of bulk product into our community? And another thing I always get in trouble about talking whenever we develop, we start ta, talking about developing in the port is the truck access. And, and I would love to be able to get cooperation, because I know, uh, I've been told that we can't. But the access, the best access to the port is through enterprise. There's a freeway on ramp and off ramp there. And as our community builds up, Harbor Boulevard and Industrial Boulevard, that's the gateway into Southport. So everybody that's not going down Jefferson Boulevard to go to Southport, which is supposed to have 20,000 homes in it eventually, is going to be going to one intersection or the other. And if we can, if we can get our, our port traffic to use Industrial Boulevard more so than, than Harbor Boulevard, then the impacts are going to be much lighter and especially like exiting your facility or entering your facility to be right-hand turns. And exiting, there's not that much traffic, but, uh, it's simple things like that that I think that we, I'm, I'm not going to quit talking about, because I think it's important that, that how we get to your facility is going to be important, because there's going to be a lot of truck traffic in. Um, screening, it's been talked about a little bit, but some of your structures are up to six, one of them is 60 feet tall. And I, I think, um, the raw product, as you indicated, uh, shouldn't be visible. I think that should be a requirement, that none of the raw product be visible. And, and to use some, um, maybe creativity in how we do the screening. We have trees, two different types of, of evergreen trees there now, but that's not going to be enough to, to do the screening. So I'd like to be able to see some concepts at, when we have a public hearing on this about that. Um, the, uh, there's some talk about the product, and I think, uh, it was mentioned that you grind up the product and it stays in the pile till you load the ship. Well, if you're loading one ship a month, there's going to be quite a bit of product there. And I'm just wondering, how does that product get from what, your site to the ship? Because it's not, uh, there's a logistical issue there. It's either going to have to be conveyed somehow or transported by truck or, or something like that. How's that work?
Would you mind, sorry, I'm so sorry. Would you mind speaking into the mic? Just because there are, believe it or not, there are folks watching us on TV live.
I'm your manager.
Thank you.
And on the, on the side of the diagram here, right next to the pile, you'll notice a heavy black line. That's an underground conveyor that will connect to the conveyors that were originally used to export woodships. So we will be connecting to existing conveyor systems that are underground. That conveyor is actually one that was called conveyor S, or, excuse me, conveyor, conveyor Z. And we are extending it to the, to the site so that we can drop the scrap into a pit, put it on the conveyors, convey the entire length down to one of the tie points to conveyor, uh, conveyor belt A, and then out to shiploader one. So it'll be the same operation as the old woodship loadouts were, except everything's going to be underground now. So none of the conveyor will be over, uh, will be above the ground.
Great. Well, thank you very much. In my last comment, uh, it was mentioned that your hours of operation would be like one shift. And, uh, I think that's great. That's, um, whatever, whatever inconveniences there might be in the community during the normal working hours, knowing that, you know, in the evenings and, and, uh, weekends and, you know, maybe Sundays or whatever, um, it'll be quiet and, and we won't have a traffic issue. So I commend you on your project. Uh, when I first saw it, I thought, yes, what we want is a junkyard. And it reminds me of North B, North B Street, where, where they collect all this stuff. And, and if you've ever been there, uh, you don't want to wear any clean shoes or, or, uh, clean clothes, because you're not going to exit that way. And this is, this is really something that I think the, the community can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morzini. Ms. Blackburn, any comments? All right. I don't have anything. I think we've been pretty thorough in the commentary. I'm looking forward to having this back. It will come back to us in the form of a public hearing. It's tentatively scheduled for August 19th, 2000, or this year. And, um, Mr. Tilly, before, before we close this item, did you, do you need me to recap this? I, I was taking some notes, but I think you were as well, so...
Yeah, I think we have pretty solid notes and we'll review the, the tape tomorrow as well.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll move on now. Um, folks have been with us for about two hours and 45 minutes. So I think, um, that there's a request from the commission to have a, a short recess of five, no longer than five minutes, because folks have been here for these, we have four more items, so five minutes and we're back. items, so five minutes and we're back. I'll ask questions and deliberate. Thank you, Ms. White.
Good evening, Chairperson Sandine and members of the Planning Commission. The California College Career and Technical Education Center seeks approval of a conditional use permit to operate a technical charter school at 890 and Barker Darrow Drive. The applicant proposes a reuse of the building and premises that were formerly occupied by Affermatrix. The technical charter school will provide both a general education curriculum and a technical curriculum.
I know, sorry. Yes, thank you, thank you.
Where students will be able to earn high school diplomas as well as technical certificates of completion. The proposed school will have five career academies that would include arts, engineering, commerce, service, and transportation. The school will operate Monday through Friday from eight o'clock to five o'clock PM. The proposal includes a phasing in over a five-year period. During the first year, the school will serve approximately 250 students and employ 21 people. And it build out, the, there will be approximately 625 to 650 students and approximately 42 people will be employed. Staff was invited by the Chamber of Commerce to attend a public affairs committee meeting this past Tuesday to discuss the proposed project. And the main concern conveyed to staff was whether the school would impeding expansion or development of the industrial uses in the area. Schools are considered to be sensitive land uses and since the site is located in an industrial park, it is likely that diesel particulate emissions are present in the vicinity of the project and staff is recommending a mitigation measure requiring the applicant to conduct an indoor and outdoor air quality analysis. In relative to the chamber's concerns, the air district regulates stationary sources that emit air contaminants and new stationary sources that require a permit from the air district or existing sources that are being modified or evaluated by the air district based on the particular project's potential to emit toxic air contaminants. When the staff report was prepared, staff had not received any comments on the environmental document. We have since received comments from the building division, the fire department, the air district, and Caltrans. And I failed to mention in the memo that you have before you that the school district responded and did not have any comments on the environmental document. Based on the comments, staff is recommending that condition three be revised stating that high efficiency air filters be used if air filters are proposed as mitigation. Staff is also recommending that three additional conditions of approval be added. Condition 11 requires the facility to comply with all applicable building, fire, and G codes and standards. Condition 12 requires that the state marshal be notified of the E occupancy designation, that's the occupancy designation that's given to schools. And the last condition requires that the air analysis be reviewed by the air district. Since all the findings can be made for this project, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing certified that the Planning Commission has determined that the mitigated negative declaration is the appropriate level of environmental review under CEQA and finds that the mitigated negative declaration represents the independent judgment of the city. Approve the requested conditional use permit subject to the findings and conditions as identified in the staff report and the memo dated July 15, 2010, and approve the mitigation monitoring plan. That concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions. The applicant is also available and would like to make a presentation to the Planning Commission.
Wonderful. I'd like to welcome the applicant to make a presentation to us. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paul Presson, the executive director and superintendent. Well, it's nice to be here and very excited about our prospects of starting a school here. The process of getting a school here has been a long, arduous one. I used to work in this district about four, five years ago. I put together this idea of perhaps starting a charter school and thought that West Sacramento was a target-rich environment. And over the years, I developed a plan and worked with some staff members. And we put together a petition. We submitted the petition according to the law to the Washington Unified School District last September and were promptly turned down. We were denied our authorization to become a charter school. Now, in the law, we're obliged to actually petition the, or at least appeal our petition to the county office of education, which is in fact what we did. We appealed it to the county board and the county board also denied our petition. And keep in mind, we know we're new. We know we're one of a kind in Yolo County because the Yolo County Office of Education has never taken a petition from any charter organization before. There was much discussion at the county level. The county people were very, very accepting and wanting to know about our ideas and concepts and however, they did deny it. So that left us the option of taking our petition to the state board of education. We took our petition to the state board of education and in that petition, am I doing it right? There we go. That petition was approved on May 7th by the state board of education. Now, what that did is it made us a lead education agency in West Sacramento. We're an LEA, similar to the LEA that exists here with the Washington Unified School District. We're a district within the district. We're your new school district in West Sacramento. Now, what we did is we surveyed all the possible facilities around the Sacramento area before we even brought this forward. And the one facility that we found was located here in West Sacramento, which was the Affermatrix Building. We knew from the get-go about 13 months ago that that facility was the facility that would certainly be the perfect one for career technical education. There is no other facility except for the outdated facilities at the Old River City High School campus, which would take millions of dollars to renovate, that would be comparable to be able to hold our program. Our programs are going back to the day when we had shop classes. The New River City High School does not have any facilities that were built into it to house or accommodate career technical education programs that have shops in them, metal shop, wood shop, auto shop, those types of technology programs. The Affermatrix Building, because of the nature of the building, a high-technology building, it's got the power, it's got the drainage, it's got everything that we would need as a career technical education school. Now, we are a public school. We're a charter school. And like I said, we're authorized by the state of California to conduct our school. And this was the selection that we made, was the Affermatrix Building. Let's see if I can get this done. Because of the location, we felt it was a premium location for our students. And anyway, when we, when we selected the building, we're very, very happy about it. And now here we are on the verge of being able to occupy the building and we'd like to do that. But what we are is three schools and five academies. You'll hear that concept that comes out of us. We're an independent study school. We're a 912 high school and we're also an adult ed school. And the other two schools that you see there are going to be separate petitions and they will be operated out of West Sacramento, not necessarily from this facility, but our 912 high school will be located in that facility. This is a schematic of our school. You can see we have the whole education center administration, student support services. We recognize the types of students that we have in this community. We recognize that 40 to 60% of the students that come into this community in the schools do not graduate. I know that number. I've been in the system. I know what that number is. And we know that these students need an alternative place to learn and that's what we're offering with our school. It's a career technical, technical education academy through five, or excuse me, education through five academies. Mastery of knowledge and skills to pass the Cassie High School Diploma for all learners. Preparation for future workforce environment. High-quality distance learning, WASC accreditation. And A through G, we're offering A through G for college. Y Career Academies. It's project-based learning with internships and mentorships with local businesses. One of the requirements for graduating from our school will be a minimum of 35 credits in the CTE or five academies to graduate. That's a minimum. So any student who comes to our school is going to have job exposure. They're going to have to go out and get a mentorship. They're going to have to go out and get an internship with one of the local businesses. Juniors and seniors probably won't be attending their later periods during the day because they will be expected to be out in the workforce. These are some of our, these are our the academies, the Art Academy, Engineering, Commerce Academy, Service Academy, and Transportation Academies. And these are the strands that we're offering right now. We know that there's a ready base of students to come to our school. I put this together last year. I surveyed and talked to all the charter schools. I didn't talk to the private schools. I didn't talk to the other schools in Sacramento or the Twin Rivers area about how many students they get from West Sacramento. And this is again, just the charter schools. Heritage Peak operates with about 80 to 120 kids. South Center Charter School, 850 kids. 200 kids from River Delta, Visions, has 1,000 students. 200 students in the Thomas Charter School and Gateway Charters 500. Those are just the kids that leave K through 12, West Sacramento, every day to go to outside charter schools. Now, if you can't think about the economic impact and how devastating that is to this community, it is. We don't know about the other one, which is the Virtual Academy, which I know is out there. This facility here meets our needs. It's a one-of-a-kind, we understand that. It's a special use, we understand that. But it does meet the needs and will serve as a positive impact economically on this community. CTECH will not be leasing facilities from the school district. The facilities that would be made available to us are inadequate, in many cases dilapidated, and we would have to invest millions of dollars in leasing facilities from the school district. We chose, we recognized that early on. And we chose that we would find someplace in West Sacramento where there's commercial property available to be able to lease, because we can, because charter schools can do that, lease space that could be available to our kids. We feel that the least money invested in the Affermatrix Building is a better use of our funds than to be going to the school district. The facility is clean and safe and state-of-the-art. We've had our state school's facilities expert out to see it and she says no problem with the facility from a school standpoint or from a surrounding area standpoint. It meets all the criteria that the state would want. Like I said, it's perfectly located for technical schools such as CTECH with our five educational academies. And we, the big thing is, what we are attempting to do here is stop the students from leaving, bring them in, give them a program that they need, create and design future, future entrepreneurs, business people, and a sustainable workforce for West Sacramento. There's a lot of kids who leave West Sacramento. Your workforce leaves and we would like to help keep that workforce here and improve the economics of the area. We've been actively recruiting students. We have about 170 students that are pre-registered. That's a lot for right now. We're a little bit ahead of the game where we should be. We have until the end of September to reach our 250. I know we're going to do it. These are our timelines. We intend to open in the first part of September. So if there are any more questions or anything, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for the presentation. We actually have a number of folks from the public who'd like to speak, so when we, we're in a public hearing format right now, so I'll start to ask folks to come up to present to us. Jim Brewers first, followed by Denise Seals.
Thank you, commissioners, once again for this opportunity to speak before you. Excuse me, is this my voice here? I've had the pleasure and the, in that pleasure, along with that came some troubling information, so a little bit of a problem for me as we went through some of these public hearings. I believe I have attended all of the public hearings that CCTech has conducted or been a part of, from the school district to Yolo County and finally when they got their final approval at the state level. And listen to the comments, pros and cons and that. The one thing, and you saw a flash of it up on the screen here a moment ago, where those numbers of the students that are leaving our existing school district, the way it's configured today, we fundamentally have missed a boat here somewhere. And CCTech is trying to fill that gap. Not everyone is going to be the next professor. Some of us are going to have to earn our livings using our hands, using our entrepreneurial spirits, your fathers or perhaps even yourselves. And they're not getting that kind of preparation out of our school district. It's a little different mentality. And I see this as a BB Can member. We're also working with the We're also working with the Urban Farm Stand in Elkhorn Park, and we're using the SacTown Hero kids to man that stand, and one of the reasons that they're in that stand is to develop job skills, learn how to make change, how to run a cash register, how to do the normal things that, as an adult, you're going to be expected to do. CTEC and their programs will not only give the students a state-of-the-art technical understanding of what they're going to go to, but as they choose that path, marine technology, you know, auto, whatever it is, they will also have an ability to test it out. They need those credits, but they can test it out over a couple different other academies, find one that fits them and suits their skills. When they're done, and as I understand their charter, is that the students will be able to transfer those credits into the university system, and I believe, I may be misspeaking here, but that's my understanding. Two big problems: losing our kids out of our neighborhoods, and as you know, BB Can is very interested in our neighborhoods. Not retaining them in our community is a big problem for us, too. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Denise Seals, followed by Dan Ramos.
Good evening again, Denise Seals, West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce. You know, the chamber found that CCC Tech is a worthwhile endeavor and would be a welcome addition to the community. We look forward to partnering with them and to helping them develop their program. However, the chamber was disappointed that the Washington Unified School District had voted to deny the charter application when presented to it. As the school district has existing facilities that could accommodate the technical curriculum of the charter school in locations where zoning conflicts do not exist. The chamber feels that without hearing from adjacent property owners of businesses about their feelings of the proposed school, that the chamber lacks sufficient information on what to take a position. Chamber was also concerned that, given holiday schedules, adjacent businesses may not have received timely notice of the proposed school, as the city staff reported that they had not received any questions or comments from nearby owners. There was a concern about the restrictions that could be placed on future uses of buildings adjacent to the CCC Tech building that would be outside of the city control because of state ed code rules about conflicting uses near schools. The surrounding land use consists of light industrial buildings, and the zoning allows potential uses that could be in conflict with and potentially be prohibited from locating near a school housing, ninth through twelfth graders. It would appear that current uses would not be in conflict with the use of this property as a school or would be grandfathered in as an allowable use. However, future users who would change uses or modify existing uses that require certain chemicals or use of truck loading bays could face increased costs to locate within a certain distance of the proposed school facility. Historically, the chamber would have taken a position to oppose use within an industrial zone that could have effective prohibiting otherwise allowable uses. But because of this conflict and because of the strong feeling of support of the program, the chamber finds itself in a very difficult position and has elected to take no position on the proposed conditional use. So I would reiterate that the chamber supports CCC Tech Charter School, its goals, we welcome it in the community, and take no position on the conditional use because of conflicts that we find with zoning in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dan Ramos, followed by Sandy Sandoval.
Good evening, Chairman Sandy, and members of Planning Commission. I'm Dan Ramos, representing the Ramos Family Trust, and I share the same sentiments of the chamber, and we are an adjacent property owner to this. We have a building right adjacent to it at eight-eighty-five Riverside Parkway. It's Hill Tower Records Base Site Building. We currently have the state architects, state library in there. And so, this is really tough for me because I'm so supportive of this program here. Actually, I've got to work with this, with the school about maybe going into what are our buildings, and I think it turned out to be too costly to remodel, it was a little smaller, and they have an excellent opportunity at this building. So, completely understand, support them very much. They should be all be getting medals here from the city for what they're pulling on here. This is, I'm really kind of embarrassed and ashamed of our school district that that support wasn't there initially on. It's really a shame, really a shame, because they do have some facilities that probably, if it would have been cooperative early on, could have helped them a lot. So, our big issue is, I have a building next door, it's a very expensive building, and I have a tenant that's a state library that's only entered for a two-year lease. They're remodeling downtown, they moved in here, they'll move out. I will be getting a new use in two years. And I, right now, I have a truck dock bay, it fits right back up there, so I know there's that little air quality analysis that's going to happen, but I hope that's considered the use of my building is a distribution building, because that's what it was, and it has the potential to be reused as a great manufacturing, biotech, all green tech, the whole works. It's actually a conditioned warehouse, so it's got a lot of value in terms of our community in terms of that. So, I am that adjacent property owner that might have a problem two years, you know, come crying and whining, you know, not be able to get in. So, it just is tough, and I share it, because I really, we really, really support this school, we really do, and it's, so, I just kind of want to get on record to say that, you know, we're supportive of the school, but yet, we're the ones that are going to probably be impacted, and it's not their fault, it's just because this becomes part of the state ed code. We all lose it, and the ed code comes in for H uses, for all this stuff like that, so there is a consequence here. So, I hope there's a way we can make this a win-win, because we certainly support the school and really applaud Paul and the whole team, their efforts to do this. This is really needed in this community. So, that's what I wanted to add to say, just, so, I am adjacent property owner. I happened to read the Planning Commission's agenda, so I knew what was coming up, and it's just, it's one of those things out there, so whatever help we might be able to get in terms of recognizing something down the road, in terms of unintended consequences, we'd certainly appreciate it by us. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Sandoval? And then Steve McPherson? Is that, oh. Don't have yours. Okay, so I have Sandy Sandoval, Steve McPherson. Sandy.
Good evening, Sandy Sandoval, for the record. I'm one of the members of the advisory panel for the CTEC Charter School, and I'd like to echo, the Ramos family was a lot of help to us, and we did consider moving into one of their buildings, but as he mentioned, the cost to retrofit it and the ultimate size of the building was not going to be a permanent facility, but the family was great to work with, and we much appreciate it. I want to take the couple minutes that I have just to, as a reference point, I know some of the members of the Chamber of Commerce have expressed a concern as if the school moves into the Business Park over on Riverside, what effect may that have on future businesses and property owners like Mr. Ramos for future development and occupancy? And I'd asked your staff to hand an exhibit to you that I brought this evening, and for point of reference, there is a, like ourselves, a tuition-free charter school in Stockton called Venture Academy. It is located, I mentioned it's tuition-free, it's located in the industrial park right off Highway ninety-nine across from the airport. The airport industrial park there has several million square feet of heavy industrial, and if you look at my exhibit, you'll see many local, regional, and even national companies that have manufacturing, distribution, and warehousing facilities there, some of which are pretty sizable, up to a half a million square feet. My point is, is that Venture Academy, who occupies approximately two-hundred-thousand feet down there, has been operating for ten years, has coexisted in a very cooperative manner with all of those industrial users that I show you on the exhibit there, and both have flourished. The community has benefited from the academy, and if you ever have a chance to go on that campus and see what those kids do down there, it's amazing, and I'm sure our children here in West Sacramento will be equally as proficient in their studies. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just ask that the representative just spoke, would leave a copy of his slide for staff as well as the public to see, since it wasn't going on the overhead, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, then, Mr. McPherson. I, thank you.
My name is Steve McPherson, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you here this evening. I have been in the district for sixteen years in the Washington Unified District as an outreach counselor and truancy officer, so I've been dealing with the student portion of this, and my partner, Paul Preston, that just presented to, as we developed this idea and looked at a way to resolve the huge loss of young people dropping out, failing to graduate, and the residual effect of that that it's had on this community, I've done that for sixteen years. So, I'm the one working with the police department and working with the kids that are doing the things that aren't productive for their life and seeing what life looks like when you're seventeen or eighteen years old and you don't have a high school diploma. And so, from an economic standpoint, that's the part I want to focus on, would be the kids for you here tonight and the economic impact for the kids. Very, very, very conservative estimate between, and now I'm going to use the whole county, between Winters High School, Woodland Pioneer High School, and River City High School. This last June, we had about three thousand kids, and I call those casualties, and that's a lot of students. And when you take the adjoining Sacramento County article in the last two weeks, to the school year two thousand eight, seven thousand one hundred students that dropped out, that didn't graduate there, if you take similar numbers from there, you're looking at about ten thousand young people that are at the age of eighteen and don't have a diploma, don't have a skill set, and can't contribute to the economy. And wonderful article in the paper in the last two weeks with a study by the National Alliance of Excellence all across the country, looking at similar forty-five different metro areas, and looked at what the economic impact would be if we just cut that dropout rate in half. And there's a straight-up correlation, as we've cut career technical education programs and they disappear, truancy and dropout have gone up. It doesn't take a brain surgeon to be able to see that's significant. And so, I want you to understand that CTEC is about CTE, career technical education, but it's also about college prep, and as we've mentioned already, we will blend those two. So, we're not exclusive, that it's only for those that want to be tactile and use their hands and skills, but we're also talking college prep, and we blend those two together. But we're talking about employable young people that have a skill set and come back into the community and buy homes and cars and serve our retail outlets and bring this economy a healthy, vibrant base, and that's what we're looking at. The residual is that a person like myself in the past as a truancy officer, we'd like to be out of a job where we don't have to deal with those young people in the juvenile justice system, and as I work with probation here in town and our superior courts, they're extremely excited about what we have to offer them, and so, I hope you see from that perspective what we're going to do for young people. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. And those are all the requests to speak, so I'll bring it to the commission before I close the public hearing. I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, we go through the process at the beginning. It's a public hearing, so we're actually fairly formal with the format here. Will of the commission. Okay. I'll need you to fill out a form afterwards, because I need, we need to have it for the record, so.
My name's Don Engolia, and my family owns Tony's Fine Foods, and we have about forty million dollars' worth of investment over in this industrial park, and so, I'm here tonight to learn about this new enterprise, and it sounds very, it sounds marvelous. And my only concern really has to do with traffic over there right now, because there's another school, and when they let their people out, they drive a hundred miles an hour down that, down those different streets, cutting through our property at times, that kind of thing, so we are naturally concerned about safety and traffic, and we hope that your program accommodates those issues, and there's some, something is added, whether it's stoplights or stop signs or what, to help control the traffic through the area, because it is a problem. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. So, before I close the public hearing, I'll bring it back to the commission for questions, clarifications, and then if there are none, we'll close the public hearing and start, begin to deliberate. So, any questions, points of clarification? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Mr. Morzini?
I just had one question, and it may even be in the staff report, and I just didn't find it, but their quality issue seems to be my biggest concern, and this is kind of like the bounce spot that we had, a very similar type of thing where you're mixing kids with industry, and I'm not sure it's indicated here if there's going to be any outside activities. Most schools have recess or they have physical education or something like that, and it's addressing indoor air quality, but there's nothing stated regarding any outdoor activities.
Right, then, there won't be outdoor activities, per se. We, if you look at the plans, we intend to have a lot of activity. The building is well-suited for a gymnasium, even, you know, a full-size gymnasium, and we intend to put one of those in, in the warehouse area that's existing there now, but we do not plan, per se, to have activities outside. Activities, we are already making arrangements for various other outside activities at other sites, but not there at the Affymetrix facility.
All right, thank you. And I apologize, my question was actually addressed.
Yes, actually, and I'm sorry, the public, our public hearing's closed, so now we're deliberating, and I'm sorry, I'll call you up, and I'd have to reopen the public hearing in the future, I apologize.
So, Sandra, you agree with that? That's your understanding that there wouldn't be no out, there would be no outdoor activity? Thank you.
Any other comments, direction? Mr. Legesma?
Thank you. I'll promise, Chair, I'll try to be brief, but this does bring a bit of a quandary, first of all, you know, in reading it and seeing the use, certainly being supportive of the mission and what the educational goals you have, is more than admirable in our community, and I applaud that, but we're here, this is, as I've been saying, I think, all night, this is a land use issue having to do with the conditional use permit. It's conditioned for a purpose, so the scrutiny here is based on that. I, too, thought of the bounce spot and how we have to manage, not just the bounce spot, but there was a baseball, indoor baseball batting facility out there and other uses, and just for context, those have been very hard to manage because we had a very large user out in the South Port area who, we had to manage an increasing intensity of conditioned uses in that area when the very large user out there, Jacmar, was also expanding, and it creates a conflict that we have to invariably get involved with down the line. So, that's my perspective on here. So, I'm, you know, in looking through the plan, Sandra, I'm seeing that this school at Build Out will have six-hundred-and-twenty-five to six-hundred-and-fifty students, based on what you've outlined, and you've outlined very well parking requirements and whatnot. What I'm concerned about is generally, and I can think of nothing more, back to the bounce spot, when we manage that there will be a large influx, at least in the school we're conditioning, will be fourteen-year-olds to ninth graders, right? Ninth grade to twelfth, which is what, fourteen to eighteen-year-olds?
Correct.
So, we'd have to assume that half of them would be driving on their own. I just, there's one entrance in and out that they'll be dropped off on, is that?
There will be, there will be one main primary area for pickup and drop off, and they're looking at a secondary entrance as well. There's three driveways here.
Is, what was the, maybe you don't know, when Affymetrix was at its peak, how many did it employ there? Do you even know? I mean, kind of, I'm trying to understand the intensity of use, we're having students there.
My recollection is that I think they might have had, the number of employees on the site at any one time might have been like a hundred and fifty, I believe. About a hundred and fifty employees?
Per shift.
Per shift.
Three shifts, twenty-four.
So, this is quite a jump in sort of a use and intensity out there. I mean, I mean.
Well, the occupancy would be similar, because Affymetrix Building is designed to have an occupancy load of about a thousand and thirty-eight people. At Build Out, this school will have six-hundred-and-fifty students plus forty-two employees, so it's going to be quite comparable.
Is, this isn't a purchase, this is, they're going to be leasing, Affymetrix is, this is still their property?
My understanding is that they will be leasing it.
I mean, I am so torn on this issue, because it is, I can see why it fits the facility perfectly, and in the same breath, you're sitting there thinking that Affymetrix built it for state-of-the-art, you know, biotech, and I just think of, we're kind of, that you- And I just think of, we're kind of, that use, it's an asset to have that facility there. And not, no dispersion on your organization one, but, you know, it's sort of the prime industry that every region, every government, municipality in the region is kind of shooting for, and we have a state-of-the-art facility that could be occupied. So I, you know, from, you know, I really don't know, I want to be supportive of this. Is there, is there conditions that we can add similar to, in spirit that we did with the bounce spot, where I worry about kids out, you know, the traffic patterns, I worry about, I know there's going to be no outdoor activity, but, you know, there will be a steady stream of people kind of coming in at certain times and not. I'm just trying to make it so that future growth in those areas don't have the impacts. I mean, I recall the bounce spot, we made them, you know, put out crosswalks, put out carpet, and we did have churches, too. They had to have, that were put in those areas. We made sure that they had traffic patterns, people monitoring that. I just, those are the kind of things that I think about, and I'm not sure if I'm being clear on what kind of conditions I'm thinking of, but to hear somebody from the audience say that, you know, the kids that already leave one of the facilities out there are zooming out there, and there are trucks out there, that's the thing that I get worried about. So maybe staff can help me a little bit with this.
Well, in addition to the things that you brought up, Commissioner Ledesma, one of the other things we did is we developed a signing program around the bounce and to warn some of the industrial users, as well as to provide notice to people that were going to use the facility and bring their children, that there was in fact a bounce spot there. So I can see what you're doing. I think the staff report and the conditions of approval have generally addressed those issues, but perhaps there is more, if we can articulate them, that could perhaps be added, if that's your desire.
Well, yeah, and looking at the standard conditions, I mean, there are, yeah, we don't, I don't have a specific, it's just not there, and I had to be so vague on it, but.
In the staff report, it mentions that the applicant has indicated that the students will be restricted to the campus, and they will not be allowed off-campus without supervision. I don't know if that helps, but that is what the applicant has conveyed to staff.
Okay. Well, let me ponder that and let the other commissioners ask their questions, but generally, you know, I want, again, I want to be supportive of it, but, but part of what I'm thinking is A, is controlling the traffic coming in and out, and the kids staying, keeping them on campus. I'm also concerned about if there were other users coming in down the line, how to, how do, I don't want to say that, you know, how can we allow those to go forward if they're, you know, they're bringing in trucks, whatever else. I know we're having the filtration systems, and I'm just trying to think, what else, are we missing anything to allow other users sort of have the right of way? This is the conditional use, this use is the conditional use. So they're, I don't know what kind of uses they might have in mind, but certainly they need to be catered or curbing their operation around the adjacent users. And that's what I'm getting at, I just don't know how I get there, so.
If I may, I'll jump in, because I actually was, I think I was the commissioner that asked the point-blank question for the bounce spot, which was, and I'll relate to this one, is this, would this approval deny any other users their currently zoned uses adjacent to the space? And that was my concern, and the answer that I received was no, it would not. It would not disallow any uses around adjacent places, adjacent businesses or facilities. And so that, I believe, is what you're seeking, and that was actually the question I asked for that other item.
Yeah, and I think that's a good way of articulating it.
The way that we answer that question is that there are no zoning regulations, there are no building or fire code regulations that would preclude the existing businesses from expanding or preclude any new businesses from locating an industrial park. Now, I'd like to add that if any of the existing uses needing to expand and need air quality permits, or if there are new businesses that are locating industrial parks that need air quality permits, then that's going to be all determined by the air district. And that's how I would like to answer that question.
I'll seize my time, thank you.
Thank you, so you jumped in.
No, I appreciate it.
Ms. Blackburn?
I think it sounds like a great school. I live in Bright, I live right near the facility. My biggest concern is traffic. I frequent that Starbucks at least three to four times a week on weekday mornings, and the amount of traffic that goes into, onto Stillwater, which is that turning lane, is a lot. Tony's Fine Foods is the next driveway up. I worry about the traffic with the big trucks all along, that border, all along the freeway. Wild Tech is in the morning and in the afternoon when they let out, there's cars speeding up and down. I'm not saying that the eleventh and twelfth graders would be doing that. My concern is the flux, the incoming traffic of dropping off all those students. Either parents dropping them off or students driving themselves in. I'd like to see some kind of traffic controls there, there's no light there. I doubt they're going to want to go all the way around past Tony's Fine Food and loop around. I don't, that's my biggest concern, is the, is the single car. I don't know if there's going to be very much carpooling, if you're going to encourage that, because you have students just coming from all over the area. That's my biggest concern. The emissions, it sounds like the building is built to filter out any kind of emissions that would get into, from the outside, get into the building. So that's not too big of my concern on my list, but just the traffic in the area. There's that stop sign right there at our stoplight, the freeway stoplight, and then you have that short little, I don't know how many feet, to get onto Stillwater, so that's my concern. I don't know how to address that issue.
Sandra, has that been addressed in the staff porter conditions, that concern, the traffic concerns? Or is it an issue that, just for keeping us moving along, the concern that Ms. Blackburn just addressed, just asked?
Based on the previous user and the occupancy load and this use, the traffic impacts or the number of trips that be generated are quite similar. And so therefore, we don't have any basis for requiring additional traffic stops or traffic sign or anything like that.
But if you have up to, well, let's say three hundred students within the first couple of years that you're there, I mean, in the morning when they're dropping them off at eight o'clock in the morning, you're going to have at least half that many cars dropping kids off. So I can't imagine, and then when the school gets built out in the next couple of years, and you're looking at six hundred and fifty students, you're going to have at least an extra three hundred cars driving in, either driving, and then the ones that are dropping them off, you're going to be driving in and then driving back out. They're not going to be driving and stopping, I mean, parking in their lot. So I think it is a big difference between how AfroMetrix, when it was, had their staff there, they went in, drove and parked, and were there all day for their shift. So if you have parents coming and dropping their kids off, that's actually a double trip in the morning and in the afternoon.
There, will be parents dropping students off, but the, and I don't, I can't, I don't know what that number would be, that's just, that's an unknown. But we do know based on what the applicant's experiences, that they expect that, even with Build Out, they're expecting approximately a hundred and twenty-five students will be driving to the school. You're not expecting any of the students to be driving to the school within the first two years that the school commences, because they're going to start with the freshman and sophomore class, freshman and sophomore classes, so they shouldn't be driving, they will be dropped off by parents. There is a bus line that operates out there, I'm not sure if it operates, I'm not sure how frequently they operate, so I don't know how many of them would be taking the bus, but certainly you're going to have parents dropping off. I just, we just don't know what that number would be.
Thank you. Other questions, concerns, actions? Mr. Moore?
Thank you. I think this is an exciting concept, and to consider West Sacramento, I think that's pretty good for us, and I like the idea. My concern that I have, first off, Sandra, you should always look to your left when the policemen are trying to get their quota of speeding tickets. At least it sounds like we've got a place we might want to go out and check out once in a while. And I was going to suggest you pass that on for, you know, everybody's benefit out there. But I'm concerned about the traffic, I'm concerned about the parking, because even though we're sure that only half the kids are going to drive, we're not positive of that. And I would hate to see a similar situation to City College across the street from here, where we didn't have ample parking for the students. If I was looking into this a little deeper, I would be looking to put some limitation on the number of students and then have it revisited at some time if they wish to expand. My major concern is the same concern that Commissioner Ledesma has talked about, which was the bounce house-type scenario, the same scenario on Harbor Boulevard when the school was on Harbor Boulevard. And we were questioning the number of trucks that were going into the oil terminal and whether or not we could allow that so close to the school. Now we're inviting a school to come into an industrial area, and then you're going to prohibit everything around it from happening, such as a Ramus building, and, you know, if Tony's Fine Foods decides they want to do us another favor and expand a little larger, they're going to be denied that because they won't be able to expand, because you're going to tell them a school's next door to them. So they can't put more loading docks on there. I have to be honest with you, I love the concept of this, I just am not sold on the location at all. And I'm not sold on allowing it to expand clear up to six hundred and fifty students without taking a secondary look at it, because I think that we will have traffic and we're going to have parking problems out there, the potential for parking problems. And so those are my concerns I have.
Regarding the, I had mentioned earlier that there are no zoning codes, building codes or fire codes that would preclude any of the existing businesses from expanding. And we don't have any codes that would preclude any new businesses from locating an industrial park as well. We don't have a parking standard for high school. In the staff report, I looked at parking standards for high schools in other jurisdictions, and based on the parking ratios for high schools in other jurisdictions, this facility would be adequately parked, actually. They have more than adequate parking.
Yeah. I'm just concerned that we have that. Yeah, but the problem with the location isn't the fact that we have a code, but if somebody wants to put in the loading dock next door and park trucks or do something out there, it could become an air quality issue.
That's going to be an air quali, that's an air district.
Well, I understand that. We're creating that the air quality wouldn't even be of a concern to them if there wasn't a school right next door. They wouldn't look twice at the issue if there were Tony's Fine Foods and Sam's Fine Food next door, they could care less. But once you tell them the school's there, then they're going to want to talk about it.
Well, keep in mind that the air district regulates stationary sources, not mobile sources.
I'm sorry?
They regulate stationary sources.
Right.
Okay, so.
I'm just concerned.
I have to leave with the, I can't, yeah, the air district.
Well, I mean, if you're going to guarantee us that there is no problem with somebody renting Mr. Ramus's building, you don't care who it is, you'll let him in there, and that goes for all the buildings around there, I'm fine with it, but I, I'm not getting that same feeling of a guarantee that these are great locations. Is that what you're telling me, that no matter what he puts in there, you're fine?
No, what I'm saying is that we don't have any building fire zoning codes that would preclude an existing use from expanding if the use is, if the expansion is allowed, and we don't have any codes that would preclude any new businesses from locating in the area if they're permitted. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Leibig, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Okay, thank you. I won't repeat anybody. I think everybody made really good comments. I also agree that this is a worthwhile endeavor, and what we're talking about is compatible uses. It's kind of an awkward location for a nine through twelve, but I understand the facility is a good one. One comment, I would like to see increased bike parking. This is a school, very few of the kids actually are going to be driving first, the first couple of years, you'll have freshmen, sophomores, nobody's going to be driving. So I would like to see an increase in bike parking. And I believe we're talking, the one impact that keeps coming up is the sensitive receptors, age class nine through twelve. And I have a question for council, can we actually condition this project for future users of neighbors?
We cannot do that, we cannot restrict future uses based on this application.
Okay, thank you. Can we condition this project to include a little bit more stricter air quality measures now with the anticipation of build-out for the future neighbors?
We can only require mitigation for actual impacts that will be caused by this project. So if we have some sort of study or analysis that will depict air quality impacts that would result in specific mitigation measures being necessary, then we can require it. Otherwise, we can't do it based on unforeseeable or potential impacts.
All right, so the air quality study hasn't actually yet been completed. When they do complete it, it will be current, like current conditions, and we can't, we can't make the filtration system stricter or more strict with the anticipation of a bigger build-out around them? Because that's what my mitigation measure would be.
May I? I appreciate where you're going with this, and what I'm thinking is, it seems that we can't do that. But what we can condition for, because this has proposed phasing in, is at expansion, can we condition for air quality, can we, at that time, if they expand in two to three years and other users have come in, we can test air quality and they'd have to upgrade at that point, right?
Right, exactly.
I think that is a fabulous idea.
I had to have one tonight.
Are you planning to?
I would. Let Commissioner Ledesma make that if he wants, otherwise I think it's a great idea upon expansion to include the condition.
That way, if any future users move in, and they have that commodity, so, or whatever. I would also ask staff, and there's no specific condition, you had mentioned it, is that could there be a condition about controlling, I don't think it's a traffic issue, I think it is a control of speed or, you know, I'm not sure, but I do directionally like to ask staff, I see the police department here, just look at some way to get out there, and once things start rolling, we're going to, you know, we don't want to cause any other speed issues or, you know, just, I do worry about that. But I'm not willing to kind of condition this to death. I might just ask staff to directionally look at that as signage around the building or whatever else we can do to make sure students are clear on their responsibility to stay on campus, to drive safely, respect the fact that there's diesels coming out possibly that causes a safety issue. That would be my request.
Are you proposing an action?
That would be my motion, yes.
Would you please restate it for the question?
God, you made me do that. I make a motion to affirm the, or to recommend, I make a motion to approve the recommended action with the added condition that upon expansion of this facility, that they, I think we said we do an air quality check at that point. Secondarily, that staff, condition that staff look into other mitigation measures to control traffic and people around that area at staff's discretion.
Is there a second? Is there counsel, Mr. Rickley?
I would just like clarification as to what expansion constitutes.
Expansion?
Adding the eleventh grade?
Adding the, there's this physical phasing that I saw on the building sites. They start moving into there, means an increase in people, so I'm assuming.
I think they indicated that they want to start with two hundred and fifty students and expand to six fifty, maybe use that two fifty or three hundred as a threshold.
Or at least moving into the next building.
That's a good point.
You probably can't get them all in the one building.
So at phase two, then phase three?
Yep.
Council, is that acceptable?
Perhaps it's done by phase.
Sorry, I make a motion before she has time to finish thinking.
I believe that it's going to depend on the actual air quality analysis. I believe that it's going to depend on the actual air quality analysis, we can't just pick a phase necessarily, it depends on which phase will lead to a bigger air quality impact. And at that point, once the threshold is met, then we can require greater mitigation.
I believe every time they move into a new building, they will need to do an analysis to determine the air quality filtration needs at that point, make it applicable to the entire site.
Is that workable?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay. There's a motion and, is there a second, Mr. Leibig?
I will second.
Second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One opposition? One opposed? Passes?
Yes, I'd just like to read the appeal procedure.
Thank you, read the appeal process, please.
Tonight's action could be appealed by anyone within 15 days of tonight's action by paying the applicable fee, which would include also the applicable staff costs in identifying and preparing the report to the council, but it has to be filed within 15 days of tonight's action.
Thank you. And now we'll turn to item number six, which is a public hearing on the proposed Liquor Barn conditional use permit, number 10-5, Mr. Tilly's returning.
Yes, good evening, let's begin. As you stated, we are, we are scheduled here tonight in a public hearing regarding the proposed Liquor Barn conditional use permit. This project would be located at 1380 West Capital Avenue, which is the former Blockbuster Video tenant space located just, just down, just west of us at the northeast corner of Jefferson and West Capital Avenue. That tenant space is approximately 6,000 square feet and the applicant proposes to operate a store entitled Liquor Barn in that location. This store would sell all types of alcoholic beverages and other items, however, tonight's the use permit is solely for the sale of hard alcohol. As the commissioner recall, we have entertained a few other use permits on this topic recently and want to make it clear that the, again, beer and wine would be a permitted use, however, the hard alcohol requires a conditional use permit. As with many projects, especially those involving the sale of hard alcohol, refer the project to the city's police department for, for their review and input. And we did that in the case with this particular project. Lieutenant Sockman from the police department is kind enough to be present here this evening. He reviewed the project based on, on behalf of the police department, provided input back to the planning staff regarding this particular project. Staff is not recommending approval of this project tonight based on our analysis and input from the police department. We believe that some of the required findings for the project cannot be granted. Specifically, there's a second required finding regarding the use being essential or desirable to the public comfort and convenience. Currently, as evidenced in your staff report, within about a 1.3 mile radius of this site, there's seven other locations where hard alcohol can be purchased, including the grocery stores. Secondly, in particular analysis from the police department, this particular location, according to their analysis, does have the highest concentration of alcohol-related calls for service and/or arrests in the entire city. It also has the highest ratio of transient calls for service at this particular location. And based on this analysis from the, and input from the police department, staff also does not believe that the required finding regarding impairing the integrity or character of the neighborhood or being detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, that finding can be made. And secondly, there are additional, some general plan policies regarding new commercial projects, regarding achieving and maintaining high-quality development. As evidenced in the staff report, the project does appear to be inconsistent with that particular land use policy, you know, given the significant transformation of this, this particular area of town that is ongoing as we speak with the new community college, the library, and the new streetscape project, et cetera. So, and I invite you to hear from Lieutenant Sockman tonight as well if you, if you desire. So staff would recommend that the planning commission deny this particular use permit request based on the inability to make three of the required five findings for the project. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Actually, will, will we have an opportunity to hear from the applicant as well, or?
Certainly, it's a public hearing would be your.
Right, right. So, any questions, Mr. Tilly, before we open the public hearing? All right, I'll open the public hearing, we have four requests to speak and if the applicant would like to present to us. Thank you, it's very late in the evening, too.
That's okay.
You waited for four hours to speak with us.
I hope it's worth it in the end. Well, I have.
And you are, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm Enderjit Graywell from Liquor Barn. I've owned Liquor Barns for about 10 years now. And I just want to give you a little bit of a background, Liquor Barn came, the Bevmo concept came out of Liquor Barn. Some of the managers of Liquor Barn went and opened Bevmo and it's the same concept, they, matter of fact, they even use the same paperwork that we use. So, the Liquor Barn, I don't want you to mistake it for just another mom and pop shop. If you have been to Bevmo, if you've come to any of my stores, you'll see we run the store at a very high professional behavior. It's, the stores are very clean, very well lit, very well stocked, and we don't, we run a professional organization. I see some of the things that, regarding transient, one of my stores is in Reading, very high transient area. We do not serve the transient, we discourage them, we don't try to, we don't discount our single bottles, we don't try, that's not the clientele we're looking for, our average ticket is $73. So that's not the kind of people we attract. And the highest calls on alcohol related, we spoke to Lieutenant Sockman, we are willing to put new lights, light up the area, have, it's going to be a very nice-looking store. We're going to put an awning, painted really, very good curb appeal. And we plan to have a security on staff at all times. So, I personally feel it's going to help the police department rather than add to their calls. We are planning to put about 750, about three-quarter million dollars investment into this place, and that's not including our inventory. Just to give you, in our Reading, we bring over $600,000 of revenue for the city. We put about $250,000 into employment taxes. So we are, we are a good asset for the, for any city. I welcome any of the police, I've said that to Lieutenant Sockman, welcome you calling the local police department. In all the years we have operated the store, we have never had any issues with the police, never had any police calls. I think in your packet, you must have seen a letter from local ABC office, they highly recommend us, they feel that we run a great organization and they feel that we are an asset to any city. So, I see, I see the list of about seven, you know, I've got a whole list I can talk about, you know, it's my business, I can talk a lot about it. I see the seven locations and Safeway and all Rayleigh's, they're not in the same category as we are. We, you know, we are, Liquor Barn is a destination. We, we plan to bring people from other communities into West Sacramento, bring the revenue into the city. And, and those other mom and pop shops, I, I kind of feel insulted, we even compare to that kind of outfits, because that's not how we run our business. And that's not how we run our stores. And if you see, I see that great development here, I see beautiful landscape, everything is just looking very nice. And I assure you that if given the opportunity, we will really add to that place, not take anything away from it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three other requests to speak, first Jay Richter followed by Michael Geet, is it Guest or Geet? Sorry. Okay, Guest, okay.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Jay Richter, I'm a commercial real estate broker with BT Commercial, a former tenant here in West Sacramento. I'm also a resident of West Sacramento. And I grew up in Reading where Liquor Barn was always a staple in the community and my family went there and it was always a clean environment and it was a hub for the city. I mean, it was, it was a very, very good place to go and shop. And the one in Reading is actually quite large, it's 18,000 feet and this building's just 6,600 feet or 6,700 feet, right about there. I just kind of wanted to, I, I really believe, hitting on some of Enderjit's comments, you know, the difference between, say, Safeway or Rayleigh's or Rite Aid is that we specialize and we specialize in one thing. We're not trying to sell food and have liquor as an incidental. I think it makes a big difference and I today actually drove all of these sites that are listed here. And I didn't go into Rite Aid, Safeway, Rayleigh's, I've been into all of those, but I had never been into Poplar Food and Liquor, Merinos, Keaton Low Cost Liquors, A&amp;B Liquor, or Country West Liquor. And I actually set foot in each one of them and I looked at the place and I've got to say that, you know, Poplar, Merinos, those two were, actually, pardon me, Merinos, A&amp;B Liquor, both those sites were probably 800 square feet at best. You can't have much selection in there and you can't, you can't do a lot with those buildings, those buildings are functionally obsolete in, in my world of commercial real estate. And then I look at Poplar Food and Liquor, that's, that's an example of exactly what we're not going to do. This is going to be a transparent building, it's up front and center, it's probably the best place I could imagine in the entire city to put this kind of business because it's, it's up front and center, it's, it's, it's close to, reasonably close to homes, it's reasonably close to freeways, it's reasonably close to the police department and the way that they run their business is, is clean and it's going to look good in the end. In fact, I've got, and another thing, just to kind of share with you, I took, I've got a couple of pictures here, but one thing that you get with Liquor Barn, which may or may not be a good thing depending on how you want to see it, is, you know, little, little liquor stores don't sign up and do billboards on freeways. And, you know, you just, you just don't get that, I don't know if you want this here or not. But I guess, let's see, what else? Out of all the sites that I drove today, Country West Liquor, which is 1.34 miles from the site, appeared to me to be a formidable competitor to some extent. It's a clean operation, it's laid out well, but it's very different than us, they stock all their liquor behind a counter. This, this is not that type of liquor store. This is something when you walk through, the liquor's accessible, it's, it's an experience, it's not, you know, chained up behind me and worried about people. And that's why we like the location, that's where a location like this should be, is where it's very visible and it's not covered in posters and cardboard cutouts and I guess you're maybe typical or stereotypical liquor store.
Can I just clarify with you, are you part of the applicant's presentation? Just because I'm, I'm trying to be fair with, equitable with folks presenting, so.
Right, I am the applicant's commercial real estate broker.
Okay, is that, is that part of the applicant's presentation? Just because I got slipped, so I was a little confused, okay. And then is Josh Schmidt also part of the applicant?
He represents the landlord.
Okay, got it. And then we'll come, then we'll come to you, sir, sorry.
Anyway, that, that, my, my response or my comments are basically with regard to that you guys want to have projects in the city that maintain a high-quality development. I think that this does that and I think that, I think it does meet this request in, in a lot of ways. And I, let's see. And I, and I also believe, as Enderjit mentioned, that if anything, it's going to inhibit to some extent some of the crime problems. And I think that with the mission and the goal of the city of West Sacramento and this corridor here, to clean it up, I think that it should little by little start cleaning up anyway as you guys continue to redevelop, remove hotels or motels and keep an eye on things. I mean, I'm a resident here and I want it to get better. My wife cried when I moved here because she, she couldn't believe, you know, that I wanted to come across the river and she is now starting to see it clean up and it's, it's, it's getting better. So, I appreciate that and, you know, I have the same concerns as some, as some of you, but I think it's a good fit and I think it could be a good fit at that location. I think that's all I've got for now.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt, do you have anything to add to the presentation?
Yeah, I have to conclude my thing.
Okay, all right.
As you know, Jay represents the tenant, Enderjit, and I represent Mr. Turner, Brian Turner, who I think a lot of you know. And I work at CB Richard Ellis, I've been there almost 10 years, I've been marketing this property for about 12 months. Mr. Turner and I went and met with some of the people at the city to try to find out what types of uses would be desirable. And we tried to meet some of those uses, unfortunately, they weren't necessarily realistic. You know, restaurant would be great, some other various retail uses would be great. Some of the uses, I just want to share that we've, we've been approached by, 7-Eleven is one of the uses, thrift stores have been, a lot of inquiries, churches, consignment shops, and we were actually, we've been approached by numerous liquor stores, which Mr. Turner denied all of them. But when we were approached by Jay and Enderjit and Liquor Barn, we were familiar with the concept, I was familiar with the concept, I do a lot of business up in Reading and I've been in the store, took pictures of the store, it truly was a Bevmo-type beverage retailer, it's not a 1,500-square-foot inappropriate liquor store with lots of items nobody wants to see or have in their neighborhood. So, you know, we definitely did our due diligence and found them to be a retailer that could add value to that, to that corner. I mean, it truly is a Bevmo, it's, it's a discount retailer, it's, it's nothing but that. So I, I kind of wanted to add those two cents and, and I did also, just so the, the commission understands and the staff understands that, you know, we've targeted all of these other types of uses and unfortunately, it's, you know, really, at this, in these economic times, it's, it's extremely difficult, you know, I, I know everybody here would love to see Elephant Bar out on the corner, but it just, you know, and in fact, I think there was a study done that the city did on restaurants and it showed that unfortunately, there's not the daytime employment, the housing isn't quite where it needs to be. And, and the reality too is a lot of these restaurants are closing down, you know, Applebee's, Chili's, Johnny Carino's, you've had a couple here in West Sacramento, Qdoba, Quiznos. So, you know, this use, you know, we felt really made a lot of sense. So, I don't want to belabor the point and I appreciate everybody's time, but I did want to let you know that I was here on behalf of Mr. Turner and that, you know, he's, he understands that his reputation's, you know, important in the city and he doesn't want to just throw any tenant in the building. And he definitely did his homework and felt like this would be a good use. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. Michael Guest, thank you for your patience.
Members, thank you for this opportunity. I have a financial interest in Liquor Barn and their expansion programs and planning. So, I could come and be like, and go on, just take my whole three minutes, I don't want to do that. I just wanted to tell you a key word that explains why we're ready to be teammates with, with the city's vision, and that is pride. Our concept doesn't work with schlock, it doesn't work with having transients come in or little half-pints buyers, it's just not our concept, doesn't work. Our concept has, is a pride of where we come in, the customer feels pride themselves, the, the space has to radiate that, the lighting has to radiate that, the parking and the awnings and, and the color scheme, it has to be an experience where people want to spend money, they want to come to our space, and that's pride. where people wanna spend money. They wanna come to our space and that's pride. And that's what this whole corridor is trying to focus on. Create more and more pride of ownership, more and more pride of community. Uh, that, that's what we're about and that's why we're good tenants for that area because what our goals are based on that, uh, uh, philosophy, that image, that mission statement, are the same direction that the city needs. Dynamic, productive, tax, tax, tax revenue, jobs. Thank you. I promise I won't take my...
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me.
Thank you. Before we close the public hearing, any questions from commissioners need to be answered? All right. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for deliberation to the commission. Ms., oh, sorry. Okay, Mr. Moore's meeting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start it. And I'm, I'm not gonna take too much time. You know, when I saw this, uh, the staff report, it was pretty clear that there are lots of places to buy liquor in that general area. So, um, I initially reading this thing, I'm thinking staff is right because, uh, we don't need another liquor store. And, and I'm not hearing the value added that we would probably be looking for. I think if, if this was, was a concept and, and maybe there's part of that concept with it, but, you know, people have been talking about, we'd like to see a Trader Joe's or something like that, where, where, uh, there were deli, lots of deli items and lots of, um, things that you can't, you're not gonna find at Rayleigh's or Safeway or Nugget Market or, or, uh, those, those kinda places. And I got online and I looked up Liquor Barn and the first thing that came on, we're in Lexington, Kentucky. Uh, there's one in Reading and I'm, I'm thinking of the concept of mass advertisement where we might be able to draw some people from downtown, midtown Sacramento to come to, to this place to buy deli items and, and liquor and that sort of stuff. Like, they come here to buy groceries at Safeway and, and Rayleigh's. We get a lot of our draw from there. But I didn't see anything else, and I thought Liquor Barn, I've heard the concept before and everybody knows about Bevmo. Uh, I've never been in one, but they're, they advertise broadly in the communities locally. So, you know, we need, we need revenue, we need good tax dollars, but I don't see this as being any more than a larger liquor store that's gonna be competing with, with the other folks that are probably gonna, and Miss Officer, Lieutenant Stockman could probably address it, but I imagine most of the crime that we have are people that are buying fortified beer and fortified wine and stuff like that. And, and you could buy that at any liquor store and I assume you could buy it, at, at a Liquor Barn too. So, in this presentation, maybe you didn't present what I was looking for, but I was looking for some value added. Something other than just a bigger store that's gonna have more product because I think in our community, uh, that didn't, that didn't work about a month ago in, in the Southport area about high qual, higher quality and that sort of stuff. The community has really spoken out pretty much regarding, um, there are plenty of places to buy liquor in, in West Sacramento and it's undeniable that in this corridor right here where we're sitting, uh, there, we have an ample supply of places to do that. So, I guess with that, I, I really support, uh, staff's recommendation that, that this project is not really, uh, providing essential or desire, desirable comfort and convenience to the community.
Any other input, Mr. Leibig?
Thank you. Um, I'm kind of torn on this one. I, I do agree that it's a wonderful location. Uh, Mr. Turner has, um, prime spot in our city and when you come into town, turn off the freeway, go north, you are facing that corner. I think, uh, it's very important that we get this right and put the right business in there. Um, I don't know what the right business is. I would lo, also love to see, uh, a restaurant there. I also love Trader Joe's. I don't think we can get them. Um, on side note, I do go to, uh, Bevmo. Uh, we go there frequently and it's a long commute to get there. Um, but I do, I do like that type of store. Um, I have some questions for Lieutenant Stockman, um, if he's, uh, available. Um...
He has been before.
He's been...
And he has a gun.
He's probably really careful how you ask the question.
He's been waiting patiently for...
I think I was sitting in the chair so long.
Four hours, so...
That's why they're in the room.
Um, the, the last permit we went through, we were, um, in Southport and one thing that came up is the number of permits that are allowed per fifteen thousand residents or per area. Um, how does that relate to this area? How many permits are there for the, um, how many existing permits are there, uh, for the community that we have? And how many spaces are available? I guess that's what I'm looking for, is are we saturated?
There's already seven in that area and it's based on a one thousand one hundred ninety-nine person population. So, there's already seven. They're allowed seven. There's already seven there.
It's not even a lot then.
So, it's not, am I, am I missing something? They won't get an alcohol permit. Is that what it's coming down to?
If they apply for an ABC permit, it will come to me and I will deny it based on the crime rate and the fact that they're already overpopulated.
That was my understanding before we actually got, got the document. Um, okay, that's...
Right, and the action, so the action before us again is not about, we, we have nothing to do with ABC. It's just...
Correct.
Is, is the conditional use in that location. And then that would be something that would have to happen outside of our jurisdiction.
But it does support staff's finding of number three.
Right, right.
And there's not much we can do about that. Um, I wasn't, uh, thank you. I'm, I think I...
Sorry, we closed the public hearing.
Um, I, I wasn't in general agreement with, uh, staff's conclusion on number four, which, um, that this is, uh, out of conformity with the general plan. Um, I could see this type of store being, um, in, in conformity with the general plan there. And I could also see or be persuaded by, um, the type of liquor store that this one would be. Um, it would be nice to have that corner cleaned up. Um, and a large investment in, uh, Kerbit Pill would be appreciated. Um, but we're not gonna get past the, the police officer's finding. Um, and we need all, all accounts to be turned over, uh, to be able to approve it. Um, I think that's, that's it for me.
Uh, my comment would be pretty much the same as Russ. I, I really, I don't really know what the police or the planning department wants to put in that corner. But I, you know, that makes it a real difficult scenario because you, you own, someone owns a piece of property, Mr. Turner, he needs to rent it. And yet, we're dictating what goes in that location. But I guess we're really not because ABC is not gonna allow it anyway if we're already saturated with the right number of permits for the area. It's kind of a dilemma. I, I'm kinda tossed between this because I, I could see this concept of this store being a good thing for West Sacramento and drawing from downtown Sacramento and doing a good job. I mean, it's just the location that's not gonna work. But I think it's a great concept and I hope we get something like that here.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Other comments?
I'll go.
Ms. Blackburn.
Um, one question. Do we know that, I don't know if this is relevant or not, but do we know if they would be denied an, a liquor license? I guess that's kind of moot, right? Because we're just talking about it being a conditional use permit?
Ours is the land use question. Is that, is that right, counsel?
That is correct. The, the question before the planning commission is whether this project meets the requirements for the CUP.
Right, thank you.
Personally, I'd like to see the Liquor Barn go in there. Um, I, I go to Bevmo often. Um, actually, I go...
And Starbucks?
Here, here.
I know. I don't buy often, but I like to go. It's, it's definitely a specialty place when I wanna buy somebody a really nice birthday present and I wanna get them a nice bottle of wine or, um, a really expensive bottle of tequila or, you know, special, a specialty item. That's, I go to Bevmo. Um, I don't go to the one in Thomas because I hate the parking area, but, um, I go to the one on Watt or, uh, Arden and Watt. But I've, I'd love to see, me personally, I think it'd be a, a good idea. I think it'd be a, an anchor for that area. Um, I don't consider it a regular liquor store. Um, so I don't see the problem. Uh, I've been to Poplar Food and Liquor. It's more of a convenience store to me than, than anything else. Um, Merinos is, is small and, 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 um, more like a, you run in and buy your Lotto tickets or, um, convenience food. Um, I haven't been to the other ones yet, so I, I really couldn't comment on those, but, um, I wouldn't mind seeing Liquor Barn go in there. That's my comment.
Thank you. Um, I'll make some comments. I think we've all spoken. I don't know if anyone else would like to speak. I actually, um, am supportive of the, of the notion of having this kind of, um, store in, in the city. I, I have a concern with the location. It's just the, that, that location. I think having, just as, as Ms. Blackburn mentioned, I, I think having that concept here would probably be desirable some part of the city. It's just, for me, it's not fitting in that, in that kinda gateway to the community along West Capitol. So, um, that's, that's my two cents. Mr. Ledesma, it looks like? Okay?
No.
Okay. Any, um, actions from the floor? Other final comments?
No, I will say that, um, I will make the motion. I will say, I think, I, I can't support the project, um, for a lot of the reasons stated above and I appreciate the business owners coming out, trying to, and I know the type of franchise it, it is. It's not a franchise, but certainly the concept is. Um, but for some similar reasons that Commissioner Sandin brought up, um, it's just something I can't support. Um, so with that, without repeating all the other comments, I'll just make the motion, um, to, uh, on the recommended action, is to deny the requested conditional use permit.
There's a motion to support the staff recommended action. Is there a second?
I'll make that second.
Mr. Morzini, seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right. Um, could you please call roll? It'd just be easier. Thank you.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Nay.
Commissioner Ledesma?
Yes.
Commissioner Morzini?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Leibig?
No.
Um, Chair Sandin?
Yes. So, that's, um, three and three.
We have a tie. There's no action.
All right.
So, we need an alternative motion or...
Alternative motion?
Possible.
I, I think, we may have to continue till we get a, is that another option for us to continue till we have, uh...
That would, that would be another option as well.
So, we can get a, a majority of one way or the other?
That, that, that is your prerogative. You could continue it to another date and...
Otherwise, we're, we're locked in. Three to three.
Is it, is it fair to ask?
Okay, Mr. Ledesma then Mr. Leibig.
But just, how do I say this? Um, as we, before we make a motion to continue it for the sake of the applicant...
Oh, yes.
But, sorry, Mr....
Yes, and I, I forgot a key point and it's minded instead. We cannot approve it tonight anyway because we need to do an environmental document and come back with conditions of findings. If it was the desire of the commission to approve it, but it stands now, it's a three to three vote and...
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch, I'm sorry. I couldn't catch the last part of what you said.
Okay, so, let me try this again. Um, if the commission decided at their next meeting to approve it, they would also have to direct staff to come back with, uh, conditions of approval as well as an environmental document on it before such time that the planning commission could approve it. Because if it stands tonight, there are no conditions of approval for approval of the project. So, when we come back, you know, given the fact it's deadlocked and potentially we would have a seventh member present at a later time, and should the desire of the commission be to approve the project, we would need conditions of approval as well as a document, correct, David? Or at least a finding.
Certainly, certainly, conditions and...
All right.
Mm-hmm.
So, the staff recommendation may still come back if we continue to deny, but there would be time to prepare...
Correct.
Background documentation. However, the commission, since we're split, okay?
Yes, we'd have...
I think that's understandable.
Okay.
Um, and because we can't take action at this time because we're deadlocked.
Well, we wouldn't take action next time. We would still come back with a denial.
Right.
And then if that vote changes, then you'd come back later with...
Right.
But given that we're, but given that it's three to three, I think, I think the staff is suggesting that they could be prepared if it came back on August fifth at our next meeting. They could be prepared either way so that we had, because we're split. I mean, if we, if we weren't as close, it would be a moot point. But because we're split, it gives them a chance to prepare that background if we wanted to go in that direction. Otherwise, it gets, it, it gets extended even longer. I, I think, is that, is that correct?
That is correct. And as, as part of that, we'll look at any supplemental information that's provided by the applicant as well.
Okay.
I might also suggest...
Okay, one moment, one time. Mr. Ledesma then Mr. Morzini.
Thank you. I might also suggest if, if there were another motion, another motion on the same vote, uh, and not to be, um, I respect everyone's decision, but, um, the opportunity for, if it got turned down tonight, the applicant would at least have the opportunity to appeal right away and continue moving to counsel, um, on the denial. Is that a true statement?
That is correct. He would have the right immediately to appeal to the counsel.
So that it kinda moves out of this body. So, I would ask this, this, that commission, think, consider that, um, as a alternative as well.
I guess my comment would be that, that, uh, we start all over again. And so, the applicant has another opportunity to make their presentation and maybe there's some information that you learned from the questions that might help, uh, persuade some of the commissioners to support your, your, your proposal. Cause I, um, obviously, one is gonna take one vote either way to make it, make a change.
Okay. Mr. Moore?
Oh.
Did you, okay. Is there a motion to continue or, and, um, Mr. Ledesma's suggestion to re, I, I don't, I don't know that we reconsidered the motion right away, that...
I think it's just direction. I don't think we need a motion, given...
Okay. So, we'll continue till August fifth. Is that correct?
August fifth, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Same time.
All right.
Hopefully not ten thirty at night.
Thank you. We'll move on to, we only have two more items and it's only ten twenty-five. All right.
Here's the next one.
We have item, uh, number seven, which is a public hearing on the draft green building ordinance. This is a public hearing. Um, so we'll ask for a very brief, this has come to us a number, actually, a number of times. I'll remind the commissioners, this has come to us a number of times. So, I believe at this point, we'd need just simply highlights and a brief staff report. Mr. Goodwin's with us here tonight. Mr. Goodwin, I actually, I just reminded the commissioners that we, we've had this come before us a number of times. So, brief highlights, headlines would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, good evening.
I'll, I'll be brief and quick. And I was just told that, uh, by protocol, I, I shouldn't even be showing this PowerPoint, so, um, but...
Need a good reason.
Yeah. Uh, before you is, um, uh, the newest and latest version of, uh, West Sacramento's green building ordinance and green building code. And, um, staff is asking, uh, the commission to conduct a public hearing and approve resolution ten dash zero six, uh, recommending the city council approve early adoption of Cal Green mandatory provisions, uh, chapters one through eight and adopt, uh, mandatory, as mandatory tier one, uh, voluntary sections as stipulated in the report and the agenda. I, I said I'd be quick and it's, it's not working for me. Um, uh, the green and sustainable community strategy, um, developed out of city council's two thousand nine, um, strategic plan. The green building ordinance is modeled after ordinances in Roanoke Park, Cotati, um, Richmond, and, uh, based on the private rating systems lead and build at green. Uh, community outreach, including, um, appearing before, uh, the planning commission, um, and other commissions in the city. Uh, we've been to council, um, and there was a, a green building, um, seminar with over a hundred participants in June of two thousand nine. building, um, seminar with over a hundred participants in June of 2009. Uh, at that seminar, uh, there was, you, excuse me, I'm a little heavy-handed with this. Um, at that seminar, there was universal concern about adopting, uh, a green building ordinance during, um, tough economic times through this recession, and concerns, uh, from develop, developers about, uh, additional costs and, um, additional administration and implementation of a green building ordinance. Um, the green building ordinance, uh, would regulate new construction, commercial and residential, um, and would use, uh, lead and build it green framework, frameworks. Uh, Cal Green, um, this is new, since, uh, we've been before you. Cal Green is, uh, a state code, uh, that's been developed over the, the past three years. Um, it will become, uh, it will be incorporated into the building code in January of 2011. The, uh, 2010 version of Cal Green, um, as, uh, what will be adopted in 2011, um, contains, uh, both voluntary and mandatory measures. Um, the city of West Sacramento may adopt, uh, the, uh, the code, um, earlier than the state, uh, between now and January, and it may also strengthen the code, make it more robust, um, by adopting voluntary measures. Uh, compliance with, uh, green code, um, is, uh, as, much more seamless than, uh, creating a, uh, freestanding, uh, green building ordinance. It's integrated into the building code as chapter 11. It's mostly prescriptive and written as a code, and, um, it's predictable. Staff used, uh, these four points as, uh, evaluation criteria, four main points, environmental benefit, cost to developers, and cost to the city, and administrative feasibility. Uh, this table, um, uh, put it simply, um, shows that, uh, a green building code, um, based on a, uh, a study by Eda and Demgem, um, international engineering and, and architecture firms, a green building code, um, is not only the, the most efficient way to integrate, uh, green, um, building and sustainable technologies, but it is also, uh, the best way to, um, incorporate, uh, positive economic impacts, um, cost effectiveness, and administrative The policy recommendation, um, as I stated opening, is, uh, for, um, the planning commission to recommend adoption of, um, an amended version of Cal Green, and, uh, a version that's focused on energy and water use, and is more stringent than the statewide version. Uh, this, uh, this code, as, uh, as suggested, um, will be, uh, 15% better than the current, um, California Energy Commission, um, standards. Uh, it will have, uh, additional water savings and incorporate major facets of, uh, the new DWR, uh, model water ordinance. Uh, evaluation or cost, um, construction costs are similar or less, similar to or less than lead projects, um, and of course, there will be no fees, um, paid to third-party certifiers, and, uh, through a significant amount of, of data, uh, proof through data that, uh, owners, uh, recover much of the upfront costs of green, um, through the energy and water savings incorporated into the code. Um, there will be increased time, uh, staff time for plan review and, um, construction building inspection. Again, construction costs, uh, no dramatic increases, especially if, um, green building and sustainable technologies are incorporated early into the process, the programming and design process. Uh, this, uh, is, uh, again, uh, representative of a significant amount of data, um, using lead. Um, Cal Green has not actually had anything truly built with it yet, so there's not data that, uh, we can use, but, uh, this is good parallel information, um, comparative information. Lead, uh, certified in lead silver can actually, uh, produce cost savings in, in projects. Um, and the, the delta, or the actual cost of incorporating, um, green building technology with lead certified and silver is minimal, um, from a cost savings to an average, um, according to these studies of just over 2%. As part of the data set in the study, um, there were over 170 buildings, um, from lead certified to platinum. Um, again, cost from savings to an 18% premium for some of the platinum buildings, uh, more than three-quarters of the buildings in the survey, um, had premiums of between 0 and 4%, um, and the majority of those buildings were, uh, between 0 and 1%. Median cost, additional cost, uh, for green, um, technology was 1.5, average cost was 2.8. There is value added. Um, uh, the, uh, the, the, the fourth line, um, the Eicholtz, um, survey, um, showed a 2% increase in building value with each 10% increase in energy efficiency. Local examples, uh, Nugget Market, uh, significant, um, energy, um, features incorporated into their new building, um, everything from, um, efficient lighting to, um, heat reclamation in their HVAC units. Tony's Fine Foods, um, a vendor who was just here, uh, $7 million solar panel installation, uh, 41% reduction in energy costs. Uh, West Sacramento Community Center, this picture is early, it looks very different now, um, it is currently tracking as lead gold, um, and, uh, cost premium, um, on that is, uh, four. Attaining gold is, uh, 3.5 to 5.5%. Cal EPA, um, was built as a very efficient building, they're retrofitting it currently. Um, they've invested, uh, over half a million dollars into Cal EPA for an annual savings of 610,000, so immediate, immediate payback and a $12 million increase in asset value. Uh, Cal Stirs, um, they are certified as lead gold, um, they are working on, uh, lead existing built-in, building platinum, and, um, they are seeing it as an investment, um, in, in that building. Uh, I'll just run through these quickly, I'm almost finished, I promise. Um, there are five categories in Cal Green, um, similar to both lead and build it green, planning and design with, uh, highlighted with some of the features shown. Energy efficiency, uh, water efficiency and conservation, one of the features, uh, mentioned metering, dual water meters for indoor and outdoor water use, again, uh, part of the, uh, DWR new model water ordinance. Material conservation, resource efficiency, um, there's some unique aspects to Cal Green that you don't see in either build it green or lead, um, regarding, uh, protection of building materials and, um, uh, rodent barriers, et cetera. Very, um, practical, um, well-thought-out features. And, uh, lastly, environmental quality, um, enhanced air filters, again, uh, moisture stipulations protecting, um, building materials, um, and the reduction of ozone-depleting materials. That concludes my presentation. Um, I hope I was quick enough.
Thank you very much.
If you have questions, um, I would like to answer them.
Thank you. And, um, it is a public hearing, we actually do have two members of the public still present, and both of them will ask to speak, and then we'll come back and we may have some questions for you, so thank you very much. First is Denise Seals, followed by Dan Ramos. Thank you for being with us.
Commissioners, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and the Chambers Board, we love it. Good night. No, I'm kidding. (laughing). Two year, right? Chamber, but the, the Board of Directors of the Chamber does in fact support the staff recommendation. In coming to this decision, this committee found the following. Cal Green was adapted to fit with the current California Building Code and Title 24. Plan check and verification process will be similar to current construction document review. Cal Green is the nation's first statewide green building standards code, and will be mandatory in the next code adoption cycle in January of 2011, as Randy said. The water and efficiency, the water and energy efficiency and conservation level requirements that are pulled out of tier one and made mandatory in this document are already required in current city of West Sacramento code and will not generate additional impact to business. And the added cost of Cal Green is similar to or less than similar private entity certified projects without the additional third-party fees for certification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Haven't been here this late in a long time, so it's good, but I figured if Randy and Charlene are here, I gotta add a respect to them coming, um, Denise gave the chamber perspective, but we, I've been, I've worked on the subcommittee that collaborated a lot with staff, and as you know, uh, we, you know, anytime you get a regulatory mood going on, that everybody, radar goes up, and, oh, that's gonna add some costs and get upset, but I just wanted to come and compliment staff, especially Charlene and Randy, and I think Denise Kocke was involved in this early on, and, and some people from Waste Management, I believe, were involved, and it's been a real collaborative effort, and it just really, you know, that's why this is the chamber, we really appreciated the outreach that Randy and Charlene did to come, we requested them to come quite a few of our meetings and explain things and do things, we collaborated. This Cal Green thing started coming on, we looked at that, and it was a, it was a really collaborative effort, so here we are, you know, together now, supporting, and we think this is really the right way to go. It's gonna, West Sacramento, one of the first cities in Northern California to get on the bandwagon on this thing, so we can get some good publicity with this, but we believe in it, and that's what, you know, we think we can pull this off and do it, so, uh, we're very happy to be here and endorse it, but I just really wanted to recognize these two here and that effort, because they took that, you know, that fear away from it, and they listened to us, and we listened to our concerns, so I just wanted to say thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much. And thanks to staff. Any questions before we, uh, launch into the, or close the public hearing? Sorry. Um, any other questions? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for deliberation.
Madam Chairman, I move the recommended action.
There's a motion to, for the recommended action? Is there a second?
I'll second, please.
Everyone, seconds. It's, I believe, uh, it's unanimous consent. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And thank you for being here, members of the public. Thank you for the presentation, and to staff for your work on that item. That will move on to council. This goes, it's, this is a resolution that moves on to council at this point.
That's correct.
Thank you. And now, um, our last item of the evening, a public workshop on a resolution 10-07, making recommendations to city council on ordinance 10-12, on the function of the zoning administrator to approve minor permits.
Yes, uh, Madam Chairman and Commissioners, if there ever was a perfect programming for talking about how to reduce your workload, then this item was the perfect example of it tonight, so, uh, I won't go into, in really any detail, the staff report, but as you're aware, there were and have been significant cuts, um, citywide, and of course, to the planning unit, both the assistant planner position and my position will be eliminated upon my resignation in October. Basically, these cuts have really resulted in us taking a look at a new paradigm for how we're going to do business in the city. And, um, one of the biggest issues, of course, really, is how we accommodate or work for the zoning administrator process. Uh, the zoning administrator actions, of which you see on your agenda every time, account for about two-thirds of all applications received by the city. Uh, the most common of those, of course, are the minor wireless permits that involve, you know, the addition of antennas, the replacing of antennas, you know, in addition, you see on the agendas, the, uh, mergers or lot line adjustment. Uh, these applications have seldom been pulled off the consent agenda, uh, very rarely. I can't think of an oper, uh, an example, really, in the last nine months or year where any member of the public has showed up on it, uh, so they're, they're very minor applications. So the proposed amendments before you tonight do a couple things. Uh, first, they consolidate the functions of the zoning administrator all in one place. Right now, they're spread out completely out throughout the municipal code. Uh, there's a couple functions of the zoning administrator that also are no longer applicable. Uh, festival permits, for example, we're eliminating. Second, the change is really effective, how new applications will be reviewed and reported. Uh, currently, what happens, and I serve as the city zoning administrator, uh, an application, you know, comes to me, um, I, I look at it, I, I ratify it, and I bring it, of course, to you for a approval. Under the proposed system, what would occur is that the individual, assuming the responsibility of the zoning administrator, uh, would make the, uh, approval immediately, and then notify the applicant of the action. And with going to, uh, having planning commission meetings perhaps as often now, and with, with the cuts to the city as often as once a month, this enables us really to be, act on things more quickly, to move projects, uh, ahead, uh, on a more expeditious basis, to save the money involved in, in printing and, uh, um, having these actions come for you, and of course, the, also, you know, these are actions that are rarely, in fact, controversial. Now, how we would report on items to you on this is that they would be identified in the, uh, probably in the administrative newsletter and reported, uh, weekly or every two weeks to you. But these actions, you know, if the zoning administrator determined here that an action was controversial, whoever the new zoning administrator will be, will most likely take that action and bring it forward to you, as planning commissioner, if there's an action, for example, that involves a, um, minor, uh, variance, where the zoning administrator doesn't feel comfortable with it, they'll still bring that action forward, but the majority of actions that, uh, currently come to the planning commission would no longer come to you, they would just be reported. So with that, uh, that concludes my presentation. This is a workshop tonight only, we'll also be holding a workshop before the city council on the 21st, but I think this is a, a process that allows us to be competitive, it expedites reviews, and it's basically consistent with the city's mission to, you know, review and approve permits as quickly and expeditiously as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Rickola. We do have, um, one request to speak, Denise Seals, and then we'll open it up for conversation and any direction to staff. Thank you.
Thank you. The chamber's supportive of changes to functions of the zoning administrator with the following caveat, provided the total fees charged do not exceed the current level of planning fees related to the planning commission. In other words, if the administrator denies a zoning, a zoning change, and the item goes to planning commission, then the administrator's fee should be deducted from the fee to bring an appeal to planning. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks. And just, I, I don't think, we're not, we don't do the setting of fees, I think, is that a council?
That is a council action. It comes to the council basically once a year, where we, we look at our fees, and...
Thanks. Thanks for that input. I, I just encourage you to, once it comes before the council, who sets the fees, to share that input with them as well. Um, other comments or direction?
I just want to be clear, I was just saying yes, it was clear.
Yes, oh yeah, I understand, I understand.
Wasn't saying yes, well, I agree with the fee.
No, no, I understand.
I understood you.
I, I concur with, with Denise. In fact, I was gonna ask a similar question. I, I guess regarding the fee structure, I would think that streamlining the process should reduce the fees, actually.
It's very possible it will. It, it's possible, because we do take additional administrative time sometimes to, you know, have the item presented to the commission, there's the Xerox and other things. So we'll look at that.
And then the next step to Denise's point would be that if there is an appeal, that it wouldn't exceed the cost that it would have to go, go through the, the regular process.
Correct. But we'll look at that probably on an annual basis, I assume, you know, whoever is my predecessor will look at it and determine if, you know, the costs have gone down, certainly, you know, we can reset that. But for the time being, they will remain the same. You know, we can reset that. But for the time being, they will remain the same.
There are another... I'll share. I think this streamlines things. I think there... I think it does get a... It will help us focus on the most important tasks at hand. I think for an applicant, I think this provides them with some, a kind of quicker turnaround in service, especially with the reduced staffing in the city. So I'm completely supportive, and I appreciate the proactivity in moving this forward. Any other comments? So that will come back to us in a public hearing format on August 19th.
Well, actually, it could come back to you on August 5th.
Oh, August 5th.
Because at the time that I prepared it, I was assuming that we'd have a meeting on the 19th, but it could come back to you as quickly as on the 5th, which would move it forward even more.
I would like to inform the audience that a public hearing on ordinance 10-12 may be heard on August 5th. All right. That brings us to... Thank you very much. That brings us to informal discussion.
I'd like to apologize for not turning my phone off during the meeting.
Oh, that's okay. It was... Gave us a little bit of levity at the moment.
Motion to adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let the record show, we ended at 10:50, 10:50.